Looking to councillors for disclosure of pecuniary interests and the general nature thereof. Seeing none, before we move into approval of minutes, I wanted to pivot over to the mayor. We, of course, since the last time we convened as council, some horrific events happened in Christchurch and for which there were some local community vigils, but I wanted to run over to the mayor to speak to that matter briefly.
Yeah, well, I'm sure everybody is aware of what happened in New Zealand. And I took some time to reflect at the couple of vigils that were held on Friday and again on Saturday night. And a number of you were here on Friday at noon when we had their 16-year-old Greta Thunberg of Sweden who inspired youth around the world for a global strike on climate change. And we hosted that here at the city of Waterloo on Friday at noon. And you think about it, it was Friday noon, 17 hours earlier, when the mayor of Christchurch, New Zealand, Leanne Delziel, was meeting with students from their global strike on climate change and they had lockdown. So when people there were going to mosques for services, you know, they were interrupted by the Islamophobic murderer. And I think that's something that we need to reflect on, that New Zealand's a great country, Canada's a great country, Waterloo's a great city, Christchurch a good city, and these things can happen anywhere. Not to say that it's fear, but just show the compassion that we need to have for a community that's right our size, halfway around the world, that, you know, really need to be thinking about them and all their, the tragedy that happened there, the people that happened there, the hate crimes that happened there, that they can happen anywhere. And I know that's top of mind for the councillors at this table, the staff that surround us, that it's something that we always keep at the top of our mind, and I think we will during our strategic plan and how we act and what we can do going forward. So at this point in time, I'd just like to ask for a moment of silence for the people of Christchurch and the Muslim people who were killed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And certainly, we're all aware from Quebec City only a couple of years ago that these things do cross borders and in all sorts of ways that we always have to be cognizant of in the decisions that we make around this table every day in terms of how we consider community and how we consider making sure everybody can feel safe and included as part of the work that we do as council, that we do in the city, and that everybody does on their day-to-day travels to be able to feel safe and welcomed. With that, as those priorities are often reflected in budgets, I'll look for approval of minutes from the budget session that we had last month, moved by Mayor Jaworski, seconded by councillor Vith. All those in favour? That's carried. Consent motion, anything to be removed from consent councillors? If there isn't, I'll look for a motion, councillor Vith, councillor Bonagor. All those in favour? That's carried. As we move on to staff reports, Mary Allen Park Public Art Project. We have a presentation from Sonia Pueska, our cultural program specialist. Go ahead when you're ready, Sonia.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to introduce new council to the public art policy, for those of you who are not familiar with it, as well as talk about our Harvest Table program, and then moving on to Mary Allen Park really quickly. Our public art policy was adopted recently, and the big parts of the public art policy which I wanted to draw your attention to, number one, are the council or the collection mandate, the funding, the roles, and the acquisition and procurement process. The number one thing to remember with our collection mandate is that every single piece in our collection should tell the history and the story of Waterloo. Other things listed in the collection mandate are to increase the attractiveness of Waterloo, to build landmarks for neighborhoods, to concentrate the growth of the arts and culture sector, to celebrate our heritage and identity, as well as increase accessibility of the artwork in city, and most, another thing very important, is to celebrate innovation and excellence in our collection. In terms of funding, we have a number of ways to fund public art. The one most often used is the municipal 1% for art project, which is how we are funding the public art in Mary Allen Park. So this reserves 1% for art for projects over a certain budget to invest back in park or in municipal investments. It goes into the reserve fund of which I come to you and ask for you to release the funds for me to then proceed with public art in the park. Another way that we fund public art is through public or private sector contributions through section 37 of the Planning Act. In terms of roles, the policy outlines the roles that people take and we all play in public art and the public art collection. Number one, we have a public art advisory committee, which is a subcommittee of the Advisory Committee on Culture. This committee advises council on the policy, helps select the jury for when we go forward with pieces, advises council on donations, gifts, and bequests to the city. Second is the staff role. We facilitate these public art committee meetings, we recommend budgets, we maintain the collection through conservation, and we coordinate the acquisition and deaccession of pieces. Finally, I come to you, council. You advocate for public art in public spaces, you authorize expenditures from the Public Art Reserve Fund, which is why I'm here today, you approve and maintain budgets through the annual budget process, you approve the jury-selected art, which the jury makes a recommendation, and you approve the acquisition or accession of public art. So you will hear me come to you again about this specific piece later on in the process. So we have been working on a project, the Harvest Table program, to make parks more accessible and to turn them into community spaces, offering gathering spaces for people, and really creating landmarks for neighborhoods. This Mary Allen Park Public Art Project will be the second in the Harvest Table program. The first was in Waterloo Park, and you can see the very lovely piece made by Ted Fullerton. This piece is called Nuts and was installed in Waterloo Park in 2017. The piece had a budget of $50,000, with a total going to the artist for $45,000 for the piece. It's quite a large piece. For Mary Allen Park, we're talking about a smaller piece, but it is a smaller budget as well. This will help facilitate community spaces in the neighborhood, and the neighborhood has been very active in this program all the way through. It also supports our collection mandate. So this is the very lovely Mary Allen Park, which underwent some construction and is now completed. If you look very closely at that picture, you'll see the table that we're talking about. So as part of this, the planned expansion for the park, we have put in public art. This table, which you can see in the image, will be retrofitted with a piece of public art on top, it will be affixed. The table is already AOD compliant, and as part of the call, we will require it to be graffiti resistant and will require very little maintenance because we have a small maintenance budget. The table has already been installed and the community has gathered around it. We have worked with the Mary Allen Neighborhood Association to collect stories, and they're very active in this ongoing process. We will ask somebody from the Mary Allen Neighborhood Association to be on the jury as part of it, and they are also coordinating other projects to complement the installation of this table. We're asking for $10,000 that was put into the reserve fund for the project to go forward with it. So in terms of the project timeline, as soon as we have your approval, or if we have your approval, we'll go forward with the RFP. This will be done with purchasing and compliance with our purchasing bylaw. We will then select an artist in probably the late spring, and fabrication and installation will take place probably at the end of the summer. We will then have a community celebration with the Neighborhood Association to celebrate the unique piece of public art at the center of their park.
Thank you very much. Sonia, questions from councillors? Seeing none. I imagine there'll be comments when we get to approval, so thank you very much. Looking for, there's a motion before us, councillor Bonagor, seconded by councillor Vith. Any comments, councillor Bonagor?
I would just like to say that this is very exciting to see this next feast going into the Mary Allen Park. And I'm very happy on behalf of the residents that you've made space for someone from the neighborhood to be on the jury as well, so I'm very excited to see what comes forward.
Seeing no further comments, all those in favour? That's carried. Next up, we have a couple of items on asset management. First, asset management policy update and the asset management journey. We have Cassandra Pacey, the manager of asset management, here to walk us through the policy update. When you're ready.
Thank you. Mayor, Chair Henry, members of council, and Mr Black, thank you for having me here today. The intent of this presentation is provide council with information on asset management and the strategic asset management policy table this afternoon for approval. So why asset management? Why policy? There are a few reasons. The first is that since 2012, the federal and provincial funding opportunities that have come forward specifically identify a requirement for municipalities have a council-approved asset management plan. These funding opportunities include grants or application grants and transfer funding grants such as gas tax. Both the asset management plan and policy provide strategic direction for the funding of rehabilitation or replacement of assets, and it's really important that they link to other strategic documents such as the STRAT Plan, the Official Plan, Master Plans, Budget, and the Long Term Financial Plan. So asset management is a collection of many pieces of data, includes what do we own? Where is it? How much is it worth? What's the condition? What needs to be done and by when? It's a lot of information, approximately 30 million data points for the city of Waterloo, and we've been collecting it in our Asset Management Decision Support System. This graph before you is one of the key outputs that we generate from our Decision Support System. Our DSS is a custom-built system that takes our asset and information, our existing funding levels, and degradation curves to project how our assets will perform over 25 years. This particular chart is based on our 2016 to 2025 capital budget and identifies that in 2017, the city had approximately 30% of our assets in poor or very poor condition, so the gold or the red. Based on projected funding from the capital budget and those same degradation curves, the DSS is projecting that the city will have almost 60% of our assets in poor or very poor condition by 2042. Investing in asset management will help maintain the assets the city owns, which in turn helps the city maintain the services we provide. The Federation of Canadian Municipalities has a short video that I'm going to show as it does a good job of explaining why municipalities invest in asset management.
Hi, I'm Lisa, the mayor of my town. The role of my council is to ensure that residents are provided with services that are essential to our quality of life, like clean drinking water and sanitation, transportation, parks and recreation services. Our community's infrastructure assets are critical to deliver these services. Today, like in many Canadian communities, one-third of my town's assets are in poor condition, in part because most of our assets were built in the 50s and 60s and are reaching the end of their useful life. At the same time, our community has grown and so has the demand for new and improved services. We've also had to spend money to upgrade our assets to comply with new environmental and safety standards. We made investment decisions based on our ability to finance the upfront development costs. However, the bigger ongoing costs to operate, maintain, and eventually replace these assets were not fully built into the analysis. Plus, our assets are vulnerable. Climate change has resulted in impacts from more severe storms, flooding, and other unexpected events. Our assets were not designed with these impacts in mind. For example, one of our roads was washed out during last spring's flood, and we had to reprioritize and redirect money in response. Now we're caught in a cycle where new infrastructure is needed to service growth that has been sprawling beyond the core. Residents count on us to deliver exceptional services. We need to catch up on overdue maintenance of existing assets and to finance the replacements of our old ones. We strive to keep taxes and fees low, however, the revenue we collect to manage all this isn't keeping pace with it all. So my council has been faced with some tough decisions. Do we adjust tax rates? Do we delay maintenance and repairs even longer and risk the consequences? How much should we place annually in a reserve fund? Do we reduce the level of services? Do we delay new projects? So what are we doing? We're engaging in asset management planning to be more strategic about how we manage our assets and spending. We're reviewing our assets across all departments in a holistic and integrated way. We're evaluating the full lifecycle costs of different capital assets and land use decisions to ensure we're choosing the best long-term option for the community. To become more resilient to a changing climate, we're developing a climate adaptation plan and starting to identify how we can become less dependent on fossil fuels. We now recognize the value of the services our natural assets provide, like managing stormwater and improving water quality. We're also speaking to residents about the cost of service delivery and their needs and priorities. All this work is helping us to coordinate our infrastructure work and set priorities. Now we have an ongoing process in place that is proactive and allows us now to make better-informed and strategic decisions. We're now much better placed to support my town's economy and our residents' quality of life sustainably. The health of our assets is central to achieving these goals. Do some of my town's challenges seem familiar to you?
For the policy before council today, there are a few items to note. In December 2017, the province of Ontario approved new legislation providing direction to municipalities on asset management. And the first milestone is the approval of the Strategic Asset Management Policy by July 1st of 2019. The policy before council includes the updates to reflect that legislation. The updates include the revision of the policy name, outlining objectives, key roles and responsibilities throughout the organization, and links to the climate adaptation and financial planning. And one last item is to note that this policy replaces the policy that was approved in 2016. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Cassandra. I see that my town, after doing asset management, was able to spring for color printing. I'm not sure we'll be able to get that far in ours, although the colors on the bar graphs really make them speak in ways that black and white would struggle with, so some targeted color printing maybe in our future. Looking around to council for any questions on the policy being presented to us today. Councillor Hamner?
Get myself organized here. Thank you. Your presentation was great. I loved the YouTube video. I think we should have it linked. It very clearly explains why we need to do asset management, so thank you for sharing that with us. My question is really around the policy, just a minor piece, and I may have missed it. It seems in there that the updates, and I get it from the legislation, are for 2025 before you start giving regular reports, but yet we've got lots of information that's coming up. So I would hope that our policy could reflect that you do do regular reporting on how the progress that we're making with our asset management project.
To you, Chair Henry, to councillor Hamner. We do have a plan to do some regular updates, and in the actual, the next report talks about our sort of public engagement plan that includes council. So for example, we're going to come back in April with a report on the legislation so you have a better understanding what the legislation includes. We're going to come back in May-June with some report cards to show what our assets are, and they're going to be specific to a few asset classes, and we'll keep coming back as those are available. And then we have some engagement plans. But we are planning on coming back with regular updates, and our next asset management plan is planned for next year, and they'll coincide with the three-year budget once we get all the different pieces in place for the legislation.
Thank you for that, and I do respect that you've got all those things coming. When I read the policy by itself, it only says you'll start reporting in 2025, and I'd like to see us get credit for everything that you're going to be doing. So just even saying that you're doing more regular updates, if you wouldn't mind taking a look.
For sure.
Thanks.
And I think under council, in item five, it's we'll get a plan itself for endorsement every four years, starting next year, and so we've got some bridging to do on some of those, which is helpful. Other questions from council? Seeing none, I'll look for a mover of the recommendations that we see here. Councillor Hamner, seconded by councillor Mayor Jaworski. Any comments here? Seeing none, all those in favour? That's carried. And I'll leave you at the podium, Cass, to be joined by Brad to talk about our journey thus far and the journey ahead.
Again, thank you, Mayor, Chair Henry, members of council, and Mr Black, for having Brad and I here today. Throughout this presentation, we will share the asset management journey for the city of Waterloo from 2014 to 2018. So the first area is the intent. So we're here to share some information, because you may find it helpful over the coming months. There's three key reports that we've had tabled over the 2014 to 2018 timeframe, and that includes the asset management plan in 2016, public engagement campaign in April of 2018, and the long-term financial plan last year. We will also share the asset management engagement plan I just mentioned for the 2019 to 2022 timeframe, and we'll provide an update on asset management activities that have incurred over the last two years. So the asset management report was first approved, and it was our first comprehensive asset management plan in 2016, and that report identified the city of Waterloo has a $20 to $23 million annual infrastructure funding gap, of which 14 to 17 is tax-based. And a few additional approvals that were included in that report are the approval of our asset management policy, that was the first one, the creation of our asset management section and related funding, and the direction to proceed with the development of a long-term financial plan. So December 2017 and January 2018, we engaged in a public engagement update plan. So we focused on the city's most extensive and costly infrastructure assets, such as roads and facilities. And there were three primary findings by survey respondents in that process. They are currently satisfied with the condition of our assets. They are in favor of increasing capital maintenance funding to keep our assets in their current condition and from deteriorating as identified and projected in the asset management plan, and they support increasing funding for infrastructure using taxes. So for our engagement for 2019 to 2022, I kind of preempted it a few moments ago, but while the engagement campaign last year ended, we continue to want to discuss asset management with council and the public because it's important. As a result, we've developed this plan for the 2019 to 2022 period. We're going to table those reports I mentioned with the report card, the asset management legislation, and we're going to keep coming back so we keep you engaged and informed. Additionally, we're taking as many opportunities as we can to attend other project open houses, and we're going to take key asset information surveys, and then we're going to post that information on Engage Waterloo, and that will occur specifically for this year, from now until October, and then we'll bring back a report in November 2019 to tell you what we've learned. And some examples of open houses that we have attended or plan to attend are the W MRC expansion, Silver Lake, some road reconstruction, and the climate adaptation plan. So what have we been doing today? And to close out my side of the presentation, there are a few things that we've been working on. We've developed two new tools for the asset management plan that are complementary. One is our cross-asset tool, which integrates the performance of linear assets while providing the opportunity to optimize the timing of rehab methods when the various linear assets require renewal. This occurs through the integration of asset performance information from roads, water, storm, and sanitary, and enables prioritization based on spatial proximity and renewal requirements. Another area that we focus on was a collection tool as our projects are being completed. So we've collected, we've gathered a data template, and we've created it, and in the future, when we issue RFPs, we'll attach that as our task requirement, so we get the information right away. In addition, we realigned some assets between different asset classes to more reflective of what and who owns what. We've also been working on connecting our decision support system directly to source data system, which will thereby improve the efficiency of data collection activities.
Thank you, Cass, and good afternoon, council. So to conclude today's brief information-sharing presentation, I will now highlight the third key report, which council would have received a link to in the staff report, CAO 2019-10, and that's the Staff Scenario Long-Term Financial Plan. So the Staff Scenario Long-Term Financial Plan was approved by the previous council on April 16th, 2018, and that was a follow-up report to the consultant scenario which was shared in March 2018. Long-term financial plans are tools for council and staff to consider future scenarios. It's a complex and comprehensive model covering a 25-plus timeline. It's a living document, which is intended to provide a financial snapshot at any given time, with future iterations to be made as council decisions are made, and it includes various assumptions and levers which can be modified as directed. So the Long-Term Financial Plan approval was broken into two parts. Items approved and implemented in April were sustainable reserve-level funding and strategic reserve consolidation, reserve policy and financial control policy updates, and then the second piece, which was items referred for future council consideration. This included various funding options to address the infrastructure gap, which Cass has identified on the earlier slides. These various options will be considered as part of the 2020 to 2022 budget and future budgets. And then just to reiterate what was shared by staff back in April 2018, the staff scenario has identified that it's taken a long time for asset performance to reach current conditions, and it'll take significant time to improve that as well. So at this time, Cassandra and myself are available to answer any questions that council might have, but just for council, this is an information-sharing exercise. It was identified at a previous council meeting that we should make sure we circulate all of these key reports to date, and I know Keshar has touched on them through various presentations, but by putting them all in one report with a link hopefully makes that exercise very easy to find.
Thank you very much, Brad and Cass. So council, what questions do you have for the team? Councillor Freeman?
Through your chair, Henry. Thank you for both your presentations. One of the things that I'm looking at here was the piece where it says, "In order to take further steps to address the funding gap, council approved," and it lists several things, "general tax levy, debenture financing, RIM Park debt charges, dedicated infrastructure levy." But I recall that we had also spoken about looking into the intricacies of the model and give consideration to things, like, so going back to the chart that Cassandra showed, if memory serves me correct, we were going to go back and look into the model to decide a few things. One, what the capacity was of the community to be able to handle some of those changes within a year, so how much infrastructure investment could happen in a year, for example, such that it could be managed. We were going to look at some of the quality indices to see how the model performed based on some of those quality indices based on feedback from people, so things like, "I don't actually think the roads are too bad," for example. So that means that maybe our pavement quality index, even though the reports might say 75%, maybe 50% in Waterloo equals a 75% somewhere else, you know what I mean? So I had recalled that we were going to look at that and then reconsider what that output graph might look like in terms of the good, quality, poor. One of the other things I wondered was whether or not also some of the other funding considerations, so going back to what I was talking about earlier in the fall around the hydro dividend, like, if that dividend were to increase, which we could anticipate just based on, you know, cost of living and so on, like, maybe another thing to do is to start taking that increase instead of putting it into general revenue, so keeping our operating line where it is right now, and instead of putting it into general revenue that... putting it into general revenue, that change could then be allocated towards this. So then there is at least a source of funding that would be potentially slightly increasing each year that could go towards this, but it wouldn't fundamentally necessarily change our operating envelope as we see it right now. So anyways, I'm looking for other suggestions other than just these, because I just, I feel like, I don't know, I just, I know that the mayor talked in his comments after the last budget around finding balance. And I think more than ever, we really need to do that and try to figure out where we can find balance without looking only to the tax base or a levy as a source. And so that's, so it's everything. It's looking at the model, looking at capacity of the community to handle changes. And also, if we can, one of the things that comes up a lot on this issue is an understanding between what infrastructure renewal is paid through utility, like water services, and what infrastructure renewal would have a different source of funding, and whether it's tax-based or something else. And I think fundamentally, that is something that people don't understand, because they think that we're letting our, for example, our drinking water resource decline as opposed to reinvesting it when that's not the case. So I think, I just think there's a lot of pieces like that around this, where when we unpack this for people, we can start to separate those things. Does that make sense? So it's just for me, this list isn't really quite complete of everything that we spoke about.
So through you, Chair Henry, to Counsel Freeman's question. There's a couple in there, so Cass and I might take Tim this. I'll leave the performance measures or indices to Cass. But basically, the model does have the ability to change those levers and see what it will do around the ability to manage increased capital infrastructure funding. So the Long-Term Financial Plan, which the staff recommended scenario, did include increased infrastructure funding. Part of that was a recognition that with that also comes the need for more staff to manage that. So that was part of the staff scenario report. So as infrastructure dollars continue to go up, we'll also need staff to manage those projects. So that's something that's been built in. Around the hydro dividend piece, so currently what's built into the base operating budget is the revenue that needs to be achieved to balance out the operating budget. Anything that's achieved over and above in terms of an annual surplus, which we have been seeing, that's going through the surplus allocation policy, 50% to curve and 50% to tax rate stave. So half of it is going to curve or infrastructure already, but it isn't built in as an anticipated surplus. So when we see that, those are one-time increases to curve. And I'll let Cass maybe talk about some of the indices. And if there's anything we missed, maybe we can circle back.
Through you, Chair Henry, to Counsel Freeman. We are currently already looking at our system to be able to adjust it for some of the indices and the treatment triggers. We are further along in the roads area. So we already have the roads built in at their base PQI. So for example, the average PQI target for across the city is 60. But as you get into lower classes, that particular PQI is reduced. And with the treatment trigger of 20 being that that's where we would trigger a rehabilitation or replacement, so a full road reconstruction. So we are already looking at those types of things. We're starting to look at that in the facilities area. And then your comment about the who's paying, when we, I talked about asset reclassification between the asset groups. When I went and looked at some of the detail and we were investigating, we realized that some of the facilities assets were actually parking, sanitary sewer parks. So we've been working on jigging those around. So you'll see some different graphs come forward in May and June when we bring those report cards forward with some updated information on what the gap is projected to be now.
And I think for Council, what will be helpful as the report cards come forward in May and June, and I've spoken to staff about this, is that it's a good opportunity as well to ask the asset managers that will come forward with those about what treatment triggers are and the rest of this. So when do we do X to a road? Or at least, when do we want to do X to a road? Whether or not we can afford it is another matter. But what's the trigger for us taking particular actions, which is level of service in the technical term, which drives some of the gaps in the graph? So those will be good opportunities to ask questions around those, so that everyone can get a good familiarity from the asset managers themselves around how those work. And I think staff have heard in the past, and as you've heard from Cass, getting ready to provide some more detailed information where they have them on different classifications of roads and what those graphs may look like to help respond to questions that Council may have. I'm seeing Ms. Patel's hand.
Through you, Chair Henry, to Counsel Freeman. Thank you very much for your suggestions and your points, Counsel Freeman. And this is very new territory that most cities are entering into in terms of taking the asset management plan, linking it to the long-term financial plan, incorporating into the budget. So your feedback is most appreciated. The model that we did last year was a scenario as a one-time in terms of what it would look like. But you're absolutely right, we do have to model it. We will, at CMT level, be looking at it strategically to see what are the different options there are, what levers can we look at, what should we phase in. So those are things that are still to be worked out over the next few months. And as Counsel Henry mentioned also, we've gotten the report about the annual report card. Looking at the different service levels itself could reduce some of the demand that is there with respect to dollars for infrastructure maintenance. So there's a lot of work that we will be doing between now and when we bring the budget forward. And this is pretty much different scenarios and things that we have to think through. And the feedback that we get with the strategic plan, too, assuming that infrastructure is going to be one of the priorities there, we'll have to weigh that in how we balance that budget out. So it is very much part of our conversations this year.
And I'll get to Counsel Vasik in a second, and then up to Counselor Bonagor. But just for Tim to translate through my own mind, one of the things that Counsel Freeman highlighted from the past, I know we've talked about, but that will be useful ahead of a 2020 budget decision, is a general sense from industry that should Council choose to ramp up funding over some various scenarios, that industries would be prepared to deliver in a reasonable way additional projects, which would be modest in the near term. And the pace of this may work just fine, but I think it would be useful to hear some assurance from industries that there's some capacity to deliver externally, not just internally, should we be able to assign more dollars. Does that make sense, Mr. Anderson?
To you, Chair Henry, absolutely. We will certainly have an opportunity through the Grand Valley Construction Association and the local CEO chapter, just to talk about capacity. And we'll see if we can get some documentation on that front to help Council as well.
Sure. Yeah.
And not trying to cut in on the other questions. I guess the other piece of that was also the community capacity. So not just like the construction capacity, but the willingness of the community, say, to have multiple roads torn up. You know what I mean? So there's also that kind of piece, too. And I think we saw that the impact of that kind of capacity when Ion happened, because they decided to go at it all at once, right? And so multiple sections of the city were under construction, and just too many people felt that their livelihoods was being put at stake. And so that was just the other piece that I wanted to share on that capacity piece.
That's my favorite sequence of complaints, is the, "Why won't you fix my road? Why won't you fix my road? Oh, my God, you're fixing my road." And it does present a challenge. And I'll say before I go to Counsel Vasik, I received a complaint last week from one association in my neck of the woods around general road maintenance and conditions. I gave them some information on how, you know, winter and other things, sort of effect, which they appreciated. But I also volunteered that they have an event coming up in the summer. I'd be happy to come, and I'm sure I could corral some staff with a couple of our pop-up boards that we've been using at the major PICs to speak about roads and whatever other asset class they may be interested in. In this case, I think they'd be interested in parks and come and translate that concern about condition into a consultation opportunity to talk about the big picture this year. I think that's something we can all think about as we're hearing those kinds of complaints, to how do we translate that into an engagement opportunity that is local and near where people are at and irrelevant, and come with information, so we can gather some feedback, rather than just give answers people don't want to hear, because those are the answers, which is normally where we're just stuck most of the time. Counsel Vasik, then Counsel Bonagor.
Thanks through you, Chair Henry. Thanks so much for the presentation. And I definitely loved hearing about the public engagement piece. And I was curious if you also engage with some of the committees of Council and the other committees on that page on the website, and other nonprofits who would represent potentially community groups who aren't, who don't maybe tend to get engaged in this kind of process in asset management, just considering how different people use assets differently. So curious who your engagement has kind of spanned.
Through you, Chair Henry, to Counsel Vasik. So during the public engagement campaign in December 2017 and January 2018, we did nine different events. Five of them were public. So there was one open house, and there was four pop-up engagements where we went to different communities. And then we also had a stakeholder meeting. We reached out to the consulting community, other municipalities, universities, and had them come in. As of yet, we haven't reached out to any community groups or any specific areas or committees of Council. But that's definitely somewhere that we can talk about at the steering committee level to see about inclusion for future reference, and how do we reach out to them?
Counselor Bonagor.
Through you, Chair Henry. I recognize that as a new counselor, my question might be irrelevant due to past decisions of Council. But I'm just curious, in the previous reports, where it's talking about use of the Rim Park debt charges, like, once we've reached the end of the Rim Park debt, the reports seem to indicate we'd be looking, that you've put models together using 50% of that money to put towards infrastructure. I would just be curious to know, if that's the case, I'd be curious to know what the impact would be if we put more of that money towards infrastructure, like 75% or 100% to, like, has that been looked at? And where was the 50%? Where did that come from?
So through Counsel Henry to Counselor Bonagor. Yeah, so the Rim repayment, once that's fully completed in 2032, the staff scenario had done 50% directed to infrastructure and 50% to new services. We could ultimately model different scenarios, as you've suggested, whether it would be 75% infrastructure, 100% infrastructure. But I think it was done to recognize that there hasn't been an opportunity to bring in a lot of new services, and that's something that staff had been hearing. Again, it's a scenario, it's a model. But the only caveat there is unfortunately, that's still a few years out until that one becomes a real possibility. We could definitely model a couple of different scenarios, and you'll see some change in that outer-year timeframe and then onwards. But that one is still a few years away to being a tangible option.
Sadly, I recognize that's the timeline. But if you could possibly put something together like that, I'd be very curious to see the impact potentially. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the overall dollar figure on that is not more than 1.5 or 1.6. That would be the difference between what's in there now. And the big numbers, unfortunately, to close. Counselor Bodley?
Thank you. Through you, Chair Henry. Having attended a couple of the public information sessions, the one at the Rec Center and for Silver Lake, when I read the boards, it's alarming. I think the problem is, even amongst the people who are at the engagement sessions, they're not there for that purpose. And we're not even getting people to take the five seconds to look at the boards that are at these things. So I'm curious about engagement from that perspective, and whether perhaps we need to highlight even more the potential crisis that this is. And the second thing that I'm curious about is, so the, and maybe ties into this, is quantifying for people who might be at this event, what $17 million, if it was to be entirely put on the backs of the tax base, how much money is that? I think might be a way to get the attention of people who are at these events. So just a suggestion.
Through you, Chair Henry, to Counsel Bodley. So in regards to the PICs that you've been kind enough to attend and stand beside me as I try to talk to people, you're right, the engagement isn't necessarily there, because they are there for another reason. But lots of people have come over. It has been more successful at these two events than the five public events that we had last time. When we had the last few events, we were at Rim Park and the Harper Branch of the Library and Atrium and the WMRC. The most people that were interested in talking to me that year, at that time, were the kids. The kids were reading the boards, and they were dragging their parents over to talk to us and say, "What does this mean? This doesn't look good to me, Mom, Dad." So that was actually the interesting part about the public engagement campaign, is that it was the kids that were interested, not necessarily the parents. But you're right, we could definitely add some information. The public surveys that are on Engage Waterloo, and that I had paper copies of, they do talk about what it would mean for that specific asset class, of what dollar increase would need. I don't remember the dollars off the top of my head, but we could look at adding something in generic, what it would mean for $17 million. That does tend to scare people, so we don't tend to talk about those things.
Yeah, through you, Chair Henry. I appreciate that that might scare people. I don't know if that's maybe kind of the point, is to try and gather some people's attention around this thing, instead of segmenting it, which I definitely appreciate. And when I was reading the stormwater management boards at the Silver Lake information session, it's, as I say, it's alarming. But I wonder if perhaps if we put that out there, that, you know, this is a $500 a year average tax increase, or whatever it would be, would that all of a sudden be enough to say, "Whoa, wait a minute, what's going on here?"
We could post Jeff outed articles, because he does tend to focus on that, no matter what the article about Waterloo is about. So some of that is getting out there already.
It's disappointing that he's not here today. But the comment about the children is actually interesting to me. And I wonder if we should be thinking about doing open houses with the high schools and trying to talk to kids at the high schools, if that's, if those are really the people that are interested in it, that might bring the attention to their parents, you know? Just a thought.
Maybe we could put that on the mayor's plate, as he does all of those responses to school requests to go in and visit. The mayor could become the asset management mayor, rather than whatever it is he normally talks about. Ms. Patel?
Through you, Chair Henry, to Counsel Bodley. It's interesting that you mentioned going to schools. I can tell you, in the City of Mississauga, the city has gone to the university students and talked to them. So my daughter happened to be at the University of Toronto Mississauga campus, and she had my counterpart in Mississauga and the staff, they discussed the business plan and do a survey with the university. So it goes into their business class, the municipal government class. So it starts building that kind of education and knowledge and awareness of issues at that somewhat more mature level.
And I know I've added these slides when I went into an introductory, you know, planning class around, you know, ethics and opportunities and the rest, and what concerns happen in government, that's the slide to say. So this is, by the way, the backdrop to every conversation we have around where things are going as you think about planning your future cities. This is what the current city looks like in the future. So that, I saw a lot of people look up from laptops at that moment, which is hard to do in university classes these days. I didn't have anybody next. Other questions from Council? Seeing none, thank you both very much. This is just to be received as information, so I'll look for a pro forma motion to that effect. Mayor Jaworski, Counselor Bonagor, all those in favor? That's carried. Next up, we have Waterloo Park Master Plan Implementation, 2019 Project Priorities. Anna Lee will lead us off, and then we'll hear from Amanda Stellings and Gordon Gravette from the Public Waterloo Park Advisory Committee, more specifically on what's before us. Take it away.
Good afternoon, Chair Henry, Mayor Jaworski, and members of Council. I won't actually be giving a presentation today, but I am here to take questions from you on the staff report. I first want to acknowledge attendance of the Waterloo Park Advisory Committee members here today. We've got Helen Bergstrom and our chair and our vice chair, Amanda Stellings, and Gordon Gravette, who will be doing a presentation. So I'm just going to take a seat over here.
It's up to us now. Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Henry, Mayor Jaworski, and Council. I'm Amanda Stellings, Chair of the Waterloo Park Advisory Committee, here with Gordon Gravette, who is the vice chair. We're glad to be here again with you to discuss the exciting projects ahead for the park and to emphasize our continued support for all the hard work that Jeff, Anna Lee, and city staff are doing. Anna Lee and city staff are doing. First of all, we thought we would, this would be a great opportunity to do a brief recap of some of the projects that were completed in 2018, starting with the 1/25th birthday celebration. This was a day of celebration organized through the Friends of Waterloo Park, which attracted people from all over the city. People were able to participate in several activities, including a drum circle, a photo scavenger hunt, a bouncing castle, and a sing-along to Grease. Of course, the celebration included food and drink with food trucks and a celebratory cake cutting with our mayor. It was a great way to showcase the beauty of the park and to emphasize Waterloo Park as the city's park. The Central Street entry showcased one of the prominent entrances to the park and completed a portion of the circuit. Most exciting was its ability to limit vehicular traffic in the park while ensuring that the users of the tennis courts are still able to access the courts. This project made pedestrians and cyclists the focus on the new trails, enhancing the safety and walkability of this area centered around a new architectural feature shown in this picture. The Central Promenade was a long-awaited project that showcases the park to visitors that are coming into and traveling through the park. This project saw a new asphalt trail, lighting, benches, and landscaping that enhance the promenade. It will also complement the LRT as it starts to move people through our city. The Central Promenade includes the twin bridge and segregated bike lanes. We're extremely proud of this project and the future projects that will provide connections to this area, including the upcoming Silver Lake project that will enhance the lake. After years of construction and excitement for the LRT, the test trains are now moving through the park, gliding by the future LRT station where people from all over the city will be exiting into Waterloo Park. Our committee is looking forward to having visitors to the park, understanding that the LRT provides an opportunity to take the focus off vehicles, which aligns with the goals of the master plan. In 2018, the city engaged two artists, Denis St. Martin and Timothy Walker, to showcase the park as part of a series of arts events. These events included a community art project that was unveiled at the Lumen Festival, which was widely attended. We're enthusiastic that these, that these events and projects will continue to highlight the beauty of the park and we look forward to the projects ahead.
And as we conclude our discussion here, at our February meeting, the Waterloo Park Committee discussed the priority projects brought forward by the staff and we wanted to emphasize our support for the upcoming projects. We're enthusiastic that these projects will go ahead and will continue to make the park a great place for the residents of Waterloo and our visitors to the city as well. We welcome continued discussion with the city staff and also alongside with the committee as we engage with the public and implement the priority projects. It's certainly an exciting time to be involved with these projects and we're enthusiastic that these upcoming projects will enhance our city's central or uptown park. The Waterloo Advisory Committee would like to thank the council for their continued support of these projects. And I also want to thank you for your time this afternoon and at this point, welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much to all of you. Questions for the team? If there aren't any, any questions, then I will look for a mover and seconder, which I assume will be Counselor Bonagor, seconded by Counselor Henry, and I'll go to Counselor Bonagor.
Through you Chair Henry. I just wanted to recognize the work of staff and the fantastic advisory committee on pulling all of this together. And when it does come to the priority projects, I just wanted to call attention to one of them, which is really hopefully to advance the design and the welcoming area around the LRT station that's in the park. Because while Waterloo Park is in uptown, it really is the city's park. So I see that, that piece of the puzzle to be really important so that when people step off the LRT and step into the park, they know that they've arrived in a place that is, that is ours to share. So I'm really excited to see how all of this moves along. So thank you to everyone who's involved.
Other comments from council? I would note, and I confirmed with finance staff that the anticipated operating impact just from this particular release is $10,000, which would show up in our future budget cycle. We'll get, staff will make sure those will be incorporated in future funding releases as council recalls on Capitol Budget Day. When we went through the, the routine projects, those were things that were itemized because when the nonroutine ones came forward, that's when they'd be itemized. That just happened to be missed in this report. So it won't be in the future ones. So we'll be able to keep line of sight on things that are pressures in our upcoming operating, operating, operating budget from, from these funding releases. With that, look, if we moved and seconded and commented on, all those in favor? That's all of us. We'll get to work. Speaking of work, this is the, now you're fixing my road. Issue Award of Tender RFT 18-25 Nielsen Avenue Reconstruction. No presentation here but staff available to respond to any questions from council. Look for a mover then of this item. Counselor Vasek, Counselor Veeth, any comments? Counselor Vasek? You don't have to, but I, you know.
Well, I just wanted to say thanks to the, to the staff today. They sat down with me just to, to give a little bit more background about the project and talk a little bit about the communication that will be happening through the project. And we also discussed a potential few fun ideas to think about, whether they get implemented in this project or not is totally kind of beyond the point. But moving the conversation forward about sidewalks, snow clearing and what that looks like in new, in new, new, or in reconstructions in places that really need it. So I really appreciated just the opportunity to talk about that and then the opportunity to explore creative ideas with the staff team. So thanks so much and I look forward to working with you on the project.
Certainly whenever through reconstructions, we add sidewalks that weren't there before, that's always an interesting conversation inside communities. So moved and seconded, all those in favor? That's carried. Next up, information report, the annual statement of remuneration and expenses for elected officials. Mayor, would you like to move that? Seconded by Counselor Freeman. Any comments on that item? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's carried. And that takes us to 2019 Budget Process Debrief, which Filipe and Tony will be leading us through and they'll tell us what these are for and what we're going to do together.
Good afternoon Chair Henry, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm pleased to share with you very briefly this afternoon, a summary of the public engagement survey that we ran around the most recent budget communications. Filipe will then take us through a council feedback session on the 2019 communication budget process, sorry, the budget process. And during that time, Brad will be running our polling software to make sure your voices are recorded. I'd also like to apologize, you may have noted in the council report that page six and seven were repeated. That was inadvertent, so I apologize for that. So the survey itself focused on communications that supports the budget and not on the budget itself. It ran for two months. It was launched shortly after the budget information was shared with council in mid-December and concluded after the budget meetings were concluded in February. Overall, there were some interesting insights, but nothing conclusive could be determined from it. As you saw from the council report, we had 55 responses. So obviously we can consider this scientifically valid. However, while we did hope for a better response, we also that this topic, while extremely important, doesn't always capture people's attention. As referenced in the report, a total of 288 people did visit the survey, of which 145 explored more than one page. We would have hoped that we'd had a higher conversion rate of that 148 to take the survey and why they didn't, we're not quite sure. But those are the numbers. Some of the running themes that we did see from the 55 people that did respond, they'd like to provide input to council before the budget is approved. They'd like the budget to, they say the budget actually, we are spending a budget on things that are most important to them. They want the budget to continue to be communicated in a way that's understandable and free of jargon, simple terms. We also asked them what services are most important and least important to them. And water services is the most important priority and loose leaf collection was the least important. Filipe will now ask for, run us through a process to review the budget process itself.
Thank you, Tony, and thank you, councilor, for having us. Before we get on to the actual feedback session for this most current budget process, I just wanted to connect a little bit back to the last one, which for members of council who were here in the previous term was a few years ago now, because it was our three-year budget for the 2016 to 2018 time period. And so we just wanted to recap some of that very quickly. Some of the improvements, and a lot of this came out through our discussions with council and as well as with staff. We revamped our internal budget committee makeup and that resulted in some much faster decision-making. So there was representation among all departments, which we previously had. But we had commissioners sitting at the table, which allowed for strategic decisions to be made quite quickly. And then smaller groups would break off to tackle various initiatives. So that was very helpful, we found in this go-round. The menu list, of course, was developed, as you know. That was certainly something that members of council had identified as an improvement that they would like to see to help with the operating budget decision-making. We paired the one-time capital costs with the ongoing operating impacts as much as possible to help council understand those decisions, developed the first budget and brief document, which we'll talk about a little bit later as well. Capital project sheets were simplified. They previously were full pages and we simplified them to half-page. But at the same time, we actually gathered a lot more information in the background, which staff needed in order to make sure we understood what was going on. And so it was kind of a two-pronged, simpler on the outside, more complicated in the background. And then operating impacts of capital were also added to the project sheets themselves. I forgot the phrase. We also shortened the documents. As you know, we talked a fair bit about that, trying to make them a simpler and easier, hopefully to digest. But all of our budget documents were put on our website and anything budget-related was also put it on, put on our website. We wanted to highlight public engagement activities conducted within the actual business plan documents. So that was a new section that was added this go-round. And then the two-pronged funding approach. So you saw the report that just came forward being sort of that approach where on Capital Review Day, you focused on those categorizations of routine and nonroutine to then make that budget day approval for non, or for routine projects, rather, hopefully pretty quick. And you had the confidence to approve those funding releases. But then more complex or projects of more interest are coming back now through these reports where council can have more fulsome discussion on them. And, and then making sure that we hopefully give you enough time to digest the information and think it through. So release in December with a couple of months in between and meetings and whatnot to hopefully get through all of the questions and, as well as for citizens to digest those, that information and talk to you about that as well. So those are, that's some of the changes and improvements we made from the last cycle to this one. And now today, we would like to come back and get your feedback on this last process. And what I did want to identify here is that we're going to give you some snapshots, visual snapshots of the documents and things, hopefully to serve as a reminder. They're certainly not comprehensive or we'd be here a long, long time. But we wanted to try to give you some verbal, or rather, some cues so that it can hopefully trigger some emotions that are positive and maybe not so positive. So that, you know, you can provide us with that feedback. But just make note that some of the information we have is a little bit outdated because it is proposed data. And all the decisions you made on Budget Day were in the process of finalizing and putting all of the final budget documents on our website by the end of the month. And so those, that's not a mistake. Those are what's on our website right now. But I didn't want anyone to get hung up on that, that it says proposed or that it's a 1.9% tax increase, things like that. We're in the process of making all of those updates because they need to flow through a bunch of documents. So hopefully that's clear. So our intention today is to talk about the four key documents, the budget and brief, the operating budget book, as well as the online materials, capital budget book and the online materials, business plans, the actual council meetings and the pace and that kind of thing, promotion and advertising, how do people know what's happening? And then other, really, that's just for council, anything else that you might wish to provide us feedback on in terms of the process itself. So starting off then with the budget and brief, here's just again, a couple snapshots of the kinds of things that were included in this report that was intended to be very graphical and quick snapshots, hopefully with the end user citizen in mind. So the looney, then diving a little bit deeper into operating investments as well as capital investments is kind of starting at higher level and going into a little bit deeper. And then looking at the incremental tax change. So what that difference from one year to the next means for the average household and then how we compare to the other cities who are making their contemplated changes at the time as well. So I'm turning this over to Brad now. He'll be asking you the polling questions. Oh, the mayor seems to have a question.
Just before we start the voting, because it's pretty, you know, black and white, yes, no, or somewhat, two questions I wanted to know before we vote on each of these documents. Could you give us an overview of what was the effort required to produce that document? And number two is that, is some of that document needed anyways? So for example, I think for this one, I'm not sure how much effort was required to produce it. I do mean relative to the other, the other documents. But I think this is solely for council and citizens. Staff do not use this versus staff probably use some of the other documents. So it'd be helpful if we knew that before each one.
Okay, sure. Yeah, good question. I certainly don't have a quantifiable effort, but to give you a ballpark sense, so on our team, myself, Brad and Kim met a number of times to sketch out what this might look like and it kept evolving over the course of several months. But certainly that was the initial development of the document. And so there was some fixed costs as far as what does that look like? And then maybe just making some tweaks over time. So I would say that the time spent this year was pretty significant. I don't think that that will be the case in the following year, you know, making some tweaks to it and whatnot. But certainly not building it from the ground out, up will be helpful. We did get a fair bit of positive feedback, so I think it was time well spent. But there was a little bit of overlap. So some information we were previously including in our operating budget book and decided, you know, let's move it out and put it here instead. And then certainly there were some new things as well. And last thing, some of the information was also in presentations. And so we thought, instead of it being in a PowerPoint presentation that, yeah, we have on our website, but people aren't going to necessarily search for that, could we put it in, in one document that hopefully could be sort of a story from beginning to end? So there was certainly time invested and a number of people involved, not just myself, Brad and Kim, but communications who spent a fair bit of time making it look as nice as it does. And, you know, reviewing it with CMT to make sure that the content was the right content. But that was sort of the initial development that I think will be much more minimized going forward if we intend to keep the majority of the information static.
And Counselor Veeth?
Through you Chair Henry. Can you, do you know the, how far reaching that book went? Like, did a lot of people from the public flip through it or was it, because you said it was, it was for council and for general public. But it'd be interesting to know, you know, did people pick it up at facilities?
I'm looking to see, well, as far as a physical copy, that wasn't something that we distributed, but it was available online. I don't know if we have stats on, Tony is looking at me. So Tony's saying, as if he's not here, there was 127 people that accessed it on our website. Now, as far as whether they were, it was useful in conversations, I'm not sure if members of council are able to speak to that. We did have a few notes on that in the budget survey itself. Again, it was 55 responses, so only a few of those. But there was a few comments there about the budget and brief being a useful document.
Questions? Then I'll go to Counselor Freeman, but-
Questions, then, councillor Freeman, but eventually, we'd like to get into the conversation that will take up most of our time. Councillor Freeman?
Is it okay if I just kind of share what, like, a response to what Felipe said in terms of has council shared that with anyone? Because I did, I sat down with a number of people and went through that document with them, and they didn't like it. And the reason why they didn't like it was that the, I'm trying to remember, but some of the comparisons we made didn't compare well with each other. So there was, like, I'm trying to find the document online, but why would I be able to find that now?
If you can pause the thought as you look that up, I can help us go through the order. We're going to have a poll question on the document, then we're going to have a round of feedback on the document, and this sounds like feedback on the document, so. I'd let some questions in because they seem to be precursors to taking feedback, but this'll be feedback. So I'll go to Brad to help walk us through how this is going to work, and then we'll do some staff.
Thank you, Chair Henry. So, yeah, that's correct. For each of the documents and then the online material questions, we'll have a poll question, which I will read out. We'll then look for each member of council to submit their response. There's been one submitted, a little bit early, that's okay. I'll be waiting to see that we have all eight responses, and now that I'm saying that, I need to quickly do something. After that, we'll go around for verbal feedback, and then there's a couple questions where they're not poll-related, they're just general feedback questions. But one of the things I need to do is make sure we're able to track the responses from council. So each of the clickers has been assigned to you, but I missed one step, so I'm just going to reset the poll, and then we're going to come back to that, okay? Yeah, so if there's anyone that hasn't, so normally, I can see the count, I'm not seeing it right now, so I'm going to assume that everyone has submitted their response, I'll just maybe check with that. Okay, thank you.
I assume that's one no at 12 and 1/2%, rounded up to 13, because 1/8 is 12 and 1/2, so there's my math for the day.
So then, to councillor Henry's comment, now, this is where we would welcome any additional verbal feedback regarding the budget in brief that council may wish to share. Maybe we can just go around and raise your hand, and councillor Henry can queue you up.
We can add color to the vote that people took. I'll start with councillor Freeman, since she'd already started, and then I'll look through the rest.
Yeah, thanks. Thankfully councillor Bodley came more prepared than I did, because he brought the documents. I guess they're in my office, actually, now that I think about it. It was these pages, people didn't like the way that we presented these. And I had, one of the people I had sat down to was someone who had done budget documents for, like, universities and colleges and that kind of thing, and he just didn't feel that these charts, he actually thought that they were misleading. And I don't think that's what we intended by them, and so I don't, I don't, I don't think. And it was, in many respects, the comments I got was that it was too brief, in the sense that people want to know why their water increases keep going up every year, and that document doesn't answer that for them. And they want to know why their taxes are going up, and that document just simply says they're going up.
So is that a vote to say we should not do a budget in brief because it's too brief, or is that just color that, I just want to make sure that staff have?
Well, for me, I sat down and tried to talk to people and use that as a tool, and it didn't help me at all. So I don't think it's money well-spent reproducing that document.
We'll go around for other comments. Councillor Henry, councillor Bonagor.
Thank you, through you, Chair Henry. It's the first time going through it for me, and also the first time doing the document, so maybe it's the eternal optimist in me that I think there probably are some tweaks that we can do with it, but I did find it useful when I was talking to people, some of the graphs did help explain things. I do agree with councillor Freeman, though, it doesn't answer why certain things are happening, and perhaps we need to think about what's the purpose of the document and make it very clear upfront. It may be too hard in the brief to explain why things are there, there may be other ways that we need to direct them, but I thought it was a good first effort.
Through you, Chair Henry. As a new councillor, it was very helpful to me to have something like that. I found it very useful at the start, but then I didn't touch it again, because I was, it was a good entry point into the deeper books. I think it may have been misnamed, though, because it wasn't really this year's budget in brief, it was budgeting in brief. So it was a really good way to show people how a budget works, how a budget is put together, but if you went to it looking for some information about this budget, it wasn't there. So I'm wondering if it's a valuable tool, but maybe we're not presenting it in the right light. So people who come to it looking for a synopsis of the budget and answering some more detailed questions, they're not going to find it there, but that's not what the document's really for. So I'm just, for me, it might just be an issue of how are we placing it within that spectrum of information. I did get very good feedback from people, though, who thought it was one of the best examples of how a budget works, and making it very easy for the public to understand. So well done to the team on that.
I think councillor Bonagor's hit the nail on the head, it's how the budget works. I think people found it very friendly, approachable, and for the vast, vast majority of citizens, this is kind of what they're looking for. And to your, further to your point, you know, we're going to be doing the strategic plan in the coming weeks and coming months, and maybe there's an opportunity to have that the why is actually, some of the why of the spending is answered by what we come up with in the strategic plan. And so just thinking forward of our strategic plan, of which we'll eventually have another document, that maybe there's, maybe there's the opportunity even to combine them into one, hypothesizing here, but anyway, I think it was the right amount of information for a lot of people, well, apparently, 130 people.
Other feedback on this one in more detail? Councillor Bodley?
Through you, Chair Henry. I'll just add that, I mean, if for some reason the decision is made not to continue with this document, there's definitely elements within here that I think are really valuable and important and would need to show up in some other document, for sure, and I think you touched on that a little bit, the what does $1 of my taxes buy, for example, is a very quick, easy thing, like, if that's, if we're not doing this budget in brief anymore, if that's the decision, then I would, that has to be somewhere in some of the other documentation. And I think I would sort of echo what councillor Bonagor said. I read, this was the first thing I read, and I never, I never looked at it again, frankly, after I'd gone through it the first time. And I actually got maybe a little bit more, I don't know what the word is, so I'm not going to use any word, but I got a little bit more out of the business plans, and I wonder if, I wonder if there's a brief, like, element of the business planning that could go into the budget in brief that sort of explains, you know, these are the departments that we have, and here are some of their priorities, that maybe speaks a little bit more to the why the taxes are going up thing, because it would highlight some of the, some of the goals that each of the departments are looking at. So maybe, maybe that'd be something to consider as part of it as well.
I just wanted, I found them really helpful. I went back to them a few times, or it a few times, just to cross-reference and stuff. But I wanted to just pick up on one of the things that you said, which is that it's harder to write something that's briefer. And so I just wanted to really appreciate how much work went into that, because it's much easier to write, you know, like, a 25-page paper than it is to write a one-page synopsis. So I do hope that we keep it in some capacity, and, but also recognize that even though it wasn't maybe perfect this time, all this feedback's really good, that thanks for putting all that effort into it.
I'd say from the feedback that I received, I received a fair amount of feedback over some social media channels and others that really appreciated the city's communication through this tool, that it was an attempt to provide, and in their view, a successful attempt to provide a very clear and quick synopsis of what's usually an opaque and difficult process, nobody, very few people will spend time, you know, trying to go through, and that it did achieve a fair amount on that scale, to be able to communicate information many people perhaps have been wondering for years, and we've only ever communicated it in 300-page books and PowerPoint presentations buried on the website. And so this replaces, replaced those in their mind in a very clear, in a very clear way. I think whys are hard, and, but for Tony and finance team, figuring out really short and succinct whys is also part of the business we need to be in on these, on these kinds of things, as we go through asset management PICs, where we sort of show up at other people's PICs with asset terminal, how do we communicate to them really quickly and get something out of them? So we're going to have to be really good at these things anyways, and I know we've got some work we're trying to do inside the communications and staff teams on, you know, IA2P and other things. So we're going to have to get really good at that anyways, and so there may be opportunities within this kind of document to do some more of that. Councillor Vith?
Yeah, I read through, I was happy to have it as an intro, because, like you said, everything was, I saw it again, right, through the other documents, so, yeah, yeah, I read through it once, but it was, it was great just to get a kind of an idea of what was coming up, so thanks for your work.
So Brad can queue up the next question with Felipe, and I'll just say, because I forgot to say this, I used it before I did each media interview, because I don't have an opportunity to communicate a lengthy, sort of, I get 10 seconds, and the budget in brief was an excellent thing for me to flip through and be able to answer. So what's going on here is like, well, here's three key projects, here's three key pieces. And so when I had to walk from here, having just received it out there and immediately do an interview, I went back to it several times, sitting in my seat, so I know that I could survive that.
We appreciate it was used as a survival document. Councillor Henry, I've written that down. Okay, well, thank you, we really appreciate your feedback and your honesty, and, you know, there's always improvements to be made, so. Moving on to the operating budget book, which, as most of you have also indicated, is obviously much more detailed, even though we slimmed it down, but it is certainly much more detailed than the budget brief. So, some things. So it was budget category, service delivery area, and then the bigger chart on the right was by department, by division, by revenue, by expense compared to the previous year. So again, different pieces of information, all kind of overlapping, but every person will want something a little bit different, and so this was our opportunity to try to show it in different ways. We also showed the tax impact, including utilities, we showed comparisons to other cities that was already published externally through a different organization, and then our own local approach. And then this is total property tax dollars, so not just the incremental change, but the, I think councillor Bodley just raised it as far as what your tax dollars buy, so in a particular year, your entire property tax bill at a very high level, what are you getting for that? And we also talked about more detailed information, so the previous slides were intended to be a bit more high-level, then this is the actual details of every specific budget request, and then that previous table, it was showing, you know, at one level up, by, you know, base decisions, service-level decisions, that type of thing. And this was the menu list that, of course, council had requested and hopefully found useful for decision-making. We took the same approach through, that was the tax-based side, we took the same approach on the enterprise side, so here's just a snapshot of water, the city utilities, but all the enterprises were done similarly. And then we also added some background information at the back of the book, so factors influencing municipalities in general, how we're funded, staffing details in more detail, and then we also included discussion papers, which is just sort of information for council to consider in the back of their minds, and policies as well that govern some of the decision-making. So that kind of stuff was in the back of the book, but it was there, but it wasn't the front, which, in the past, not recently, but in the past, it's sort of done the reverse, right? All that stuff at the beginning, and it takes some time to get to the meat and potatoes of what's actually happening, so we wanted to make sure that we reversed that. So, and I'm turning it over to Brad, unless someone has any clarification questions at this time.
Thank you. So was the operating book effective, yes, no, somewhat, and you can see we have a couple already?
And then we'll look for your feedback again, like we just did on the brief.
So again, I can't see the count, because we're in projector mode, so I can't see the little tool at the bottom, but we got a, I think we have all the responses here.
It's a very mixed bag on that one.
And then again, we'll look to councillor Henry to coordinate, but any other verbal feedback on the?
Comments on the, on the operating budget book? Councillor Bonagor, councillor Freeman, councillor Vith?
Through you, Chair Henry, just a couple of things. I appreciate the fact that you were trying to present the information in many different ways for many different people, but I found that extremely confusing. It was, it took, it took me a long time to work out what those different tables at the front were trying to tell me. It was much easier for me to just go line by line into the guts of it. But, you know, that's just me, so, you're trying to please everyone, so, for me, that just actually muddied the waters somewhat. And is this the time where I could also talk about the menu items, Chair, or is that coming up specifically later?
The menu presentation was here, in the operating budget book.
So one thing that I would like to maybe consider going forward, just realizing that the menu list and the menu items was new, when it came to the decision day, I'd be interested to find out if, on the day we were voting on menu items as they were raised, and it was only partway through the process that the cumulative impact of the decisions we were making was becoming really clear. I'm wondering if next time we might be able to set, like, just choose menu items for discussion and then make our votes, because I, I'm just speaking for myself, I think the process, we didn't always get, it was difficult to weigh up priorities when we're making decisions on the fly, and people came to the table with different priorities. So personally, I'd be interested to see what that process would have looked like if we'd said, here is the menu, the menu items, what are we going to put up for a vote? And let's set them all together, and then as a council, decide which of these we want to go forward with. I wholeheartedly support the decisions that council made at budget, but I wonder if this is a process that might need a little bit of nuance built into it.
That's certainly something that was top of my mind as I tried to gather it, knowing everybody was dealing with that, so I take the feedback and we'll see what we can manage with this. I would say we didn't actually vote on them in order of priority. It was very out of order of the staff-led priority, and it was in order with, from a procedure bylaw point of view, who put their hand up first, and I got them on the table, and I went through folks, and those came in varied order. I do know that that did cause staff some consternation, because we didn't get to one and two until after already having looked at, like, seven, 12, 14, 87, and I started to get some very furrowed brows, I was feeling, in that, we eventually did get to the top level, but I tried to govern that, but none of us were used to it, so it's good feedback on. So I have, and councillor Freeman, then councillor Vith?
I found this book really helpful. I probably went back to it all the time, and I appreciate councillor Bonagor's comments about the detail, and I think, and think perhaps that what happens is when you look at it the next year, you know? And so, so for me, like, flipping back and forth kind of worked for me this year, because I knew what I was looking for. I knew what I was looking for. I really can't tell you how much the alignment between the menu items back to the, the corporate business plans, how much that worked. That was the singular best tool I had for having conversations with people face-to-face, was being able to have that, that corporate business plan to say, here's where the city's headed over the next year or two, and here's the actual menu items that align with that, and then being able to refer to this shortened operating book to pull that out and say, yeah, here's that menu item, here's what it aligns with. And, and one of the things in this book that I thought was really helpful was kind of the, the giving back, like, you could see where the departments were giving back on their efficiency side, and, and I think, I think we can talk about that better, because most people want to know how it is that we're striving to do things differently, or think differently, or be more efficient, or, or whatever, and, and I thought that those menu sheets identified that, but we didn't really summarize it as strongly or as well as we could have in the beginning of the book. But this was a book that I, I did carry around with me in conjunction with the corporate business plans.
Then I have Counselor Vee.
Through you, Chair Henry, thank you. This book didn't have as many stickies in it for me as the Capital book did, but the back pages were good, it was great to have that kind of background, and the tax comparisons thing, but what I was, I just wonder where, the word menu, kind of, I had to, I was kind of shaking my head, like, well, I don't, I don't know where, is there another word? Like, anyway, that, that was really the one thing I thought, what's a menu? Like, what do you mean by menu? And they were all in red, right, so. And that, like Counselor Freeman said about the, what the give and take, what departments are giving back, what they're not, their ex, what they're not using, and realigning things, so, thank you, was a useful book.
Other feedback, Council? I think I'd say, my own perspective, this is, this is the book I run with, and when you get to the big charts, that was the agenda for Budget Day, so, knowing that that would be the agenda I'd be leading you through, I was trying to make sure I also thought in the way that was aligned with that, with that chart, so that I would be, I would be able to both be a counselor and be a chair at the same time, which is challenging to manage, especially when we get to more optional areas. In terms of, we'll get to linkages with Business Plan, I think later, I'll have comments on the Business Plans themselves and the role I think they can play. On the, on the front matter, aside, in many ways, they were sliced and diced, included particularly looking at the Strategic Plan links, those are not this Council's strategic plan, and so I imagine those weren't as valuable for, for this Council as they were for those of us that came from the last Council who felt ownership over those items and were looking for alignment. I know four years, three years ago, when we were doing the three-year budget, many of the decisions around what was activated or voted upon, or not during the day, came from trying to make sure we activated as much strategic plan linkage as possible, and so seeing those up front were very helpful. So, I mean, to that end, whether, whatever, whether it's called a menu, or Angela helps us come up with a different word that she's happier with, having those linked through as well up top for, for what our options could be, could be helpful as we get into strategic plan alignment to, I'm not sure how we're going to solve, how we're going to solve the challenge that Counselor Bonagor raised, but I have a feeling some strategic plan alignment at the top may help contribute to, to people's prioritization in their, in their mind, and those aren't items that we considered. Any other thoughts that, nope, okay, so we'll move on to the next page?
Okay, thank you. So online materials for operating, this is a snapshot of, if you go to our budget page, this is, this section is specifically for operating, it's normally collapsed, you see one line, but it's been expanded, so all of those blue items are links that take you to all of those specific documents, which were not in that budget book, except for, of course, that top blue one, which actually is the book. But all of those things below is additional information, should Council or any member of the public wish to go into more detail. So base budget requests, operating impacts of capital and so on, those are all details that are further broken down. And so this next slide shows, it's small, but hopefully you can see it on your monitor, what a growth, an operating impact of capital and growth would look like, just a random one-picked G3, and so it provides a description, the link to the strategic plan, the existing strategic plan at the time, the impacts of not funding this item, and then a little bit more detail about the breakdown from like a, you know, financial perspective. Basically, all of the different items that I just talked about look a little bit different, this is just one, but it's to give Council an understanding or sense of, a reminder of the kind of detail that was provided, and whether that was useful to you or not, and so again, that's really our next set of questions.
So question number three for Council's feedback today is, were the operating documents easy to find online? Okay, I think that's it. Comments, Counselor Vee?
I used them, and it was, they were easy to find online, because staff provided a link, I just clicked on the link and there they were, so, thank you very much.
Counselor Henry?
I, too, found them very helpful to, to follow, once I got used to using them, so probably more just being new, a bit more of an orientation to them, but I did find it extremely helpful, especially the link to ongoing costs with it, and what was coming, what was coming back up, so that was great. I, from a process piece, it would have been helpful to be able to, as we were discussing it in Council, be able to see them quicker, I found like I was flipping through too many, too many things, so I, but that's more of a process piece, not the documents themselves.
Counselor Freeman?
As much as I hate killing trees, it was for Counselor Hamner's last comment was the reason why I did have staff print them, and it was really helpful on Budget Day to have that hard copy. I liked having them online, so that, again, when I was having conversations with people, if I didn't have everything in hand, I knew I could go there and find it, and it was really useful to, because, I mean, every now and then you do have somebody who really asks that detailed question, and that, those, those sheets told the answer, and for me, they were critically important.
Counselor Bonagor?
So I use these materials all the time, so thank you for putting them up there. I also found it a really good piece of information for the public, so I was able to put together a, like, budget from, from start to end, and on social media, which kind of helped lead people through the process, and it showed people, if you are interested in a topic, you can drill all the way down to the line item and, and see the request yourself. So I think from a transparency point of view, it's also very, very useful to have these online. The, the one thing I wish I'd seen a little bit more detail in was, again, it's process, but in the budget request, like, in, in those little request papers, there's a line that says, you know, what's the risk if this is, if this is denied or deferred, and often, there was, there was no real detail there. So it was hard as a new counselor to really understand the risks that could be attached to saying no to something, as, apart from, it'll make it hard to do the rest of our work, it's like, yeah, I realize that. So a teensy bit more detail could have been helpful at times, but as, as a tool for myself and for the public, I think it was really easy to point people to it, and easy for me to go back again, I don't, I, like, shuddered to think how many of the clicks that you received were just from me.
I'm sure IT has your IP, and was able to tell Counselor Vasick.
Yeah, thanks, I don't know the way that this, if this could even be possible, but one of the things I wanted in the online Capital Book was the item number, like, the reference number, if that could be linked to, because sometimes I was just especially curious about something, and that flipping back and, I did flip back and forth, but it would have been nice to just click, and I know probably that's hard for the website to also manage, I know we're trying to reduce the number of pages on the website, so, because some of the reference numbers might refer to some things in the operating budget, and some of the, I don't remember what they're called right now, but those, that you just showed us, so, a link on the website on every reference number would be really handy.
So, for me, I decided to click somewhat just to be different on this, and that's because there's one thing that it took me a while to find, and then I kicked myself when I, when I didn't, and that was the actual big operating book itself, because it's the title line of this, and it's got a, so I didn't look, I looked for it in the list, and they're like, well, but the link is right there, Keshwar kept telling me. Eventually, I found where she meant, that it was, it was right at the top. So there may be opportunities just in the, in the paragraph as we're reading, because you don't always read headlines and anticipate that you can go, go from there, I was looking for it in the list, and I never got it. So I, I had my paper copy open with the computer, and it, just until I figured out I should click on the darn thing at the top, and that, that made life a bit easier. In terms of, and I know I forwarded this already, Felipe, as a, as a thought, we made substantial changes, staff made substantial changes to the Capital Reference Pages this time to condense them and make sure that prominent information is there, and that may be, may be necessary to achieve what I'm asking for here, but on the, on the, on the operating book requests, the individual budget requests, we get what the increment is, either ongoing or one-time in 219, and the three-year budget will have three of those, you know, columns. I think a column that's missing on the far-left side is what the current budget is for that item, like, what's the base that we're building from. So when I see out of, out of Mark Dextra's area, another request for, for FRD show up in the next budget cycle, I anticipate I'll see another facility rental discount request to show up, because that happens every budget cycle. People love sports. I don't know what the base is, so when you're telling me you need $100,000, because you probably need $100,000, is it $100,000 on top of $400,000, is it $100,000 on top of 1.2 million? I think that's a useful piece of information that, that I don't see on the, on the budget request. So, that may not fit in the three-year budget without thinking more about the page, because of how wide it is. So those were the two things that, that I had on those, but this was used all the time, because it needed to be, and I'll echo the comment on risk. I've, I've had the same thought on the risk box, of saying, if you don't fund this, then I can't do it, and that's a problem, it's like, okay, I know that, but, but as we get into thinking about infrastructure and other kinds of pieces, one of the decision points around how we prioritize items is how risk is by risk, right, is, I can do this road or I can do that road, not doing this one, because it's got the culvert underneath and the, it's really important and critical to the network, we deal with this, even though they're in the same condition. And so, so risk is a factor when we think about capital items, but we don't give it enough detail to think about it from an operating perspective at the moment. So if that's it for, for that one, question, whatever's next, four?
Thank you, that's great. So, moving on to Capital, the Capital Budget Book is organized into about five main sections, and each of these had a written summary at the front with some key messages that hopefully was helpful, and then you would find a bunch of summary tables behind that. So here's sort of a little snapshot of what some of those looked like, we have by funding source, by department, by division, by department, division, and reporting criteria, and then, of course, each project was listed individually by funding source, which is the next slide here. And I know from a staff perspective, this is quite useful, but this is something where, you know, it might be helpful for, for Council to provide some feedback, wanted just to kind of show you that those two red boxes are two projects, they have individual funding sources that make up the total project envelope, if you will, so Reference 410 is one project, Reference 411 is another one, but if you see 412, it's only got two lines, because it's only two funding sources, and, and some projects have one line, because they're being funded from one source. So that is, just to show you that it, it looks quite long, but it's to show how each project is, is being financed or funded, but that may or may not be useful to, to Council, so we wanted to show that. The next slide, we provided Council with a flavor of some of the projects that aren't included in the ten-year capital program, but certainly isn't a comprehensive, otherwise it would be somewhere between 20 to 20-some-odd million dollars at a minimum, based on what Cassandra just talked about, or more if there were, you know, growth or service, new service type of projects. So this is just to give Council a flavor. Then the next slide is about the operating impacts related to one-time capital decisions, so that hopefully there's a bit more of a connection there, that's something that we've only been doing the last couple of rounds of Budget. Sure, we could make some improvements, continued ones there, but heading in the right direction. The next one is about reserve and reserve funds that are impacted by capital decisions, so providing, you know, the balances over the 10 years, so that Council can see what is happening in those reserves. And then some details about debt, there was quite a number of charts and graphs there as well, as well as numerical information and tables like you see on your screen. So a lot of information in the Capital Budget, and I'll turn it over to Brad.
And as Brad asks his question, and have you deal with that, Felipe, can you answer the Mayor's question back from Budget in Brief, which is, how much of the Capital Book has it slayed out and provided, are things staff use and, and need anyways? You touched on some of it, but there's a lot of tables in here, are these things that are generally helpful for CMT, OLT, various other acronyms of the city?
Right, so, I mean, we certainly use that detailed project listing quite a bit from an internal staff perspective, but over time, we've developed other charts that we thought were more, hopefully useful to Council or the citizens, which were more higher level, and so it really went from sort of a detailed listing to a detailed listing plus many other tables that show it from a reporting criteria, perspectives, routine and non-routine, you know, funding source summaries, how much, you know, DC is paying for projects versus other sources of funding, things that are probably not necessarily as key for staff that are delivering the projects, but looking to help Council with decision-making and understanding what they're, they're looking at from a different perspective. But that's where, you know, it might be valuable one time, but not every time, or for different people, and around the horseshoe as time goes on. So there are pieces of the Capital Budget Book, but I would say that the key is those, I want to know what my project is, in what years, and how much funding is in there, and that's what is most important from a staff perspective in delivering the projects, I believe. But the rest is really more, we want to tailor it to Council so that it can help you with the decision-making around, around the table.
And I note that the, the individual Capital Reference Sheets, when they were larger, included all the itemized funding sources that you see breaking, broken out on them, but that was condensed as a, just here's the, here's the top-line piece, but those stayed in the, in the big charts, so just as a, as an item of change to flag. Okay, comments, Council has on Capital Budget Book, Mayor Jaworski?
I found the, all the data provided useful, including all the level of details, the different lines, didn't appreciate them mostly in my first year, but now I appreciate them a lot more. What I would say is, particularly with Capital Budget, so having, having the information online, in the cloud, downloadable, searchable, I found in particular the Capital Budget, I only used it on my computer, I didn't use the hard copy book itself, it was just, when you're going to look it up, it was so, so simple just to look up a certain number, a certain project number, and I found online to be sufficient and actually much better.
Through you, Chair Henry, and your question about the breakdown by funding bucket, funding source, I found that really useful, and it really helped me see how these things come together and what the funding mechanisms are behind them, so I very much appreciated that. And I need to give a shout-out to Keshwar for sitting down with us new counselors, till you just moved right in the way, Dave, sitting down with each of our new counselors, that session, so, the, the Head of Finance was, was kind enough to sit down with each of the new counselors to explain exactly in detail all the way through how the budget works, and that was extremely valuable, so I really must thank you for that.
Of course, individually, not all at once, others? Of course, individually, not all at once. Others? Other, other comments? Bryce?
Through you, Chair Henry. Just since the mayor mentioned that he looked at it mostly online, just to present the opposite view. I only used the paper, paper document. I had tons of notes written into it. All of the, I, the, the fact that it had all of the different funding spots actually gave me a lot more room to write notes, which was, which was nice. So yeah, I just wanted to make that, I def, I, I use that. And one of the other things I guess is, as I reflect back, I didn't really look at a lot of the tables that were in there. Maybe as a new counselor, I, my focus was really on the line by line, every individual thing. And I wonder if I was to go back and do the process again, or when we go back, when we do the process for the three-year budget, if I'll be looking at those tables a little bit more than now that I have a sort of better understanding of it on a very micro level.
Counsel Freeman?
Yeah, I do the same. I make a lot of notes in my hard copy. I know that sounds goofy, but it also helps me when I'm talking about it later. To say, why is it that I agreed with that, didn't agree with that, whatever?
Yeah. And I'll, I'll pick up on some of Counselor Bonagor's comments on the charts. And I, they weren't sort of meat and potatoes in terms of looking through decision-making. But I, I did refer to them from, from time to time, just to get a sense of balance. And then to look at individual reserve funds, as I was thinking about some items and funding sources that were proposed and think about other alternatives for those that we ultimately didn't choose to activate. It was useful to, to see, you know, the reserve fund changes over time. It was useful to see where those were to, to recognize. All the money's gone here, money's, and, and just, just to understand, to understand where that's. So I, I didn't use them in detail, but they were, they were helpful when they were there. And the, and the one thing that wasn't here, and I'm not asking anybody to produce it, was to sort of allocate the, the listing of, of projects by funding source in, in sort of a way, if I wanted to figure out everything that was funded by Parkline dedication over the, over the budget, which projects those were. To, to, that roll up into the chart that tell me those, those pieces. I, I couldn't do that with any of the documents that we had. I didn't really lose any sleep over that. It was, you, you tracked down a rabbit hole just because you're, you're interested in that. But that's, that's an example of something that I was curious about as we get into park strategy and as we get into some of those questions. It's what projects are depleting this? So we really, are we doing it too quickly? Is there, is there spacing? And, and that maybe get in, get into a way that staff need to help us identify in other ways more is capacity, right? This council's made Jeff Silcox's child's life nearly miserable for the next few years. Because we've tried to put our 10 years of important work in the next three. And, and that, that's an issue I'm sure that he'll have to manage. But it's, it's something that having that list of here's all the projects makes it visually easier for, for me to see. It's too much to ask somebody to do something like this. There's 15 projects in its team two happening in them. I'm sure he would agree that that results in needing more people. That comes to council. We don't activate his menu item. But it's, these are, that, that's one thing that I found that was missing, that I looked for once or twice and, and tried to figure out how to do. And I ended up, as the mayor said, just using the search feature and I found them pretty easily. But it was a table in my head more than a table that I could read. I think we're on to question number five.
Yes, we're getting there. The next piece then is the online materials for capital. So similar to operating, the capital budget book is right at the top. You might have missed it, Counselor Henry. And then all the.
That one I, that one I found. I don't know. I don't understand the difference.
And then, excuse me, all of the appendices that were in more detail and then the project sheets themselves. So here's an example of a project sheet that I'm sure you remember what that looks like and pretty condensed. So yeah, looking for your feedback on accessing that information, which I think you already provided a little bit already. But feel free to add more if you'd like, in terms of your feedback following this question.
Is that everyone? Any color? Anyone would like to add to that? Counsel Vasquez?
Probably this is just because I'm a new counselor and there was a lot of information. And I think Counselor Bonagor said it before too, that these in particular, I didn't know them, about them for a long time. And then Mayor Jaworski was like, um, you should be looking here. But he said it nicer than I made my face. And so, so I guess, I mean, it's kind of like when you're like an instructor at a university and then the students ask you what's in the syllabus and you're like, just go read the syllabus. So I realize that this just might be the right question. I'm a much nicer instructor than that. So I guess I was just curious, like, okay, like a, because I'm also a visual person. So I don't know if I'll need this for next year, but just like, okay, if it were me, if you're reading the capital budget book, here's the supplementary documents, like even just an example on a PowerPoint slide of like, oh, here's reference number 103. And then you might also want to go to G4. I don't even, that's not even right probably, but you know what I mean, right? Like you might want to look here, here and here, just so it's like a quick snapshot. That would have been helpful for me, but I don't, I didn't know that until now. Yeah.
This is the YouTube suggestions feature. Is that the, you might want to see this video now that you've been on. Of course, that leads down to a pretty horrible rabbit hole that I hope the budget would not. Brad, was there a comment? No. Anything else from council? I think we basically condensed our capital conversations. I think we can move on to the next.
Yes. So moving on to business plans, we understand that pending the outcome of the strategic plan, that council will probably provide some feedback at that time in terms of what the business plan template could look like. Perhaps including some of the key indicators that I think were discussed last, or a couple of weeks ago at council. But in the meantime, if there's any feedback that you would like to provide to us now, we can certainly take that and then circle back again, once the strategic plan has been finalized and you'd like to provide more feedback there. So welcome any feedback you have at this time. And just a reminder of some of the key pieces within the document this go around. So there was a look back at the three years, public engagement, the key initiatives for 2019. Other key initiatives that if budget becomes available, could be included. And then summary tables from a financial perspective. So here's operating and then capital. So looking for, turning it over to Brad for the pulling question on this.
And while we're doing that, Felipe, can you answer again the, the mayor's question around how useful a document is the business plans for staff? Is there anything in here that staff use to, to guide their work? And that really gets into, I think, how it's produced and, and for what audience. Is that something you and maybe Tony could, could comment on?
Perhaps I can start while Tony is walking. Well, I mean, certainly there, it's a, it's a good way for staff that, I mean, the way I've, you know, taught. In terms of talking to other directors and the commissioners about it. It's a way for us to focus our attention in terms of how to build our work plans, which are a lot more detailed within our, with our staff, right? They, they, they go much deeper than the business plans do. So it's really the connection between the strap plan and those work plans and trying to figure out, you know, how to get those two things connected. So it focuses us from that perspective. And it really kind of puts into words, I think, what the financial budget is trying to accomplish in a, in a different way and a more of a storytelling sort of way. That's at least, I think, the goal from my perspective. But happy to have Tony provide his two cents.
Similar, it is still a, I would say, work in progress. That's why this feedback is important. I think O L, O L T would say that we're not always connecting as well as we should with the strap plan. So that's the part of the work and the feedback that we're looking forward to getting so that it can be a relevant, everyday document for, for people. And, and staff are saying as well, they want to understand how they support the business plan, how it's important for them. So, so we do think this is a valuable tool. I don't think we've landed yet quite on it being as valuable as it could be. So that's why this feedback's really important.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. So all votes were, we're in, I'll go around the horn now for this. Counsel Freeman?
So I really like this document. And the reason is, is because I see this as the singular place in which staff can help me understand how you interpreted my strategic plan. So what you heard council say as our strategic plan and how you built that into your business plans. And then how it is that you allocated a financial resource to that business plan to make it happen. And so when I go out and sit down with people and talk about it, this was the singular best document to have those conversations. And so when you realign, like when you gave me the, just all I have, all I needed was just the, the menu numbers. Like B3, G4, whatever it was. I just needed those menu numbers so that if anybody said, you know, wow, there's, they're looking at a, an increase in staff of one full-time equivalent, why do they need that? You could say, well, here's, here's what's driving that number. And, and I found that to be incredibly useful. And I know that there was a question about how can we, how can we do that within these business, business plans without making it like point six font? And so can you go back in your slide? I don't know if you can or it screws up your counting. But in, in the page where you show like 2018 to 2019 and the difference, my suggestion was, is that you actually have like three pages. So 2019 to 2020, 2020, 2021, 2020, 21 to 2022. And then that way you wouldn't have to change the template of the page or the font or anything. And then you could just put, you know, a footnote or whatever to say, you know, project sheets, B10, 12, whatever. And that, that would, that document to me was so useful. I, I marked it from stem to stern. And that was a singular document that I wrote all over with. And I start with that document. So that when I start giving consideration to what's, what's a priority that wasn't included in the budget, I can go back to those business plans and say, like, does it make sense to bring in that menu item? Like, like some of the conversations that we had about the mechanical engineer for the HVAC system and going back and looking at that within a business plan and how that, how that strategically aligns with where we're headed. It was, that document, honestly, it is, it is the most useful document. And I see that almost as the cover to everything underneath.
Through you, Chair Henry. Just going to echo mostly, most of what Counselor Freeman said. So for me, after the budget in brief, this was the first thing that I read before I got into the line by line stuff. And the only thing missing for me, and it was kind of an, oh, I get it now moment, when I was going through the operating and capital books, was how like, how these initiatives tied directly to the, the line items. And I, that might look, I, I don't know how it would look in the document if you just listed, these are all the operating and all the capital line numbers. But that would have been really helpful for me from the outset if I had seen those. And then it would have been even more helpful when I, when I went back because I found myself sort of writing those in myself after the fact to, to sort of figure out how those aligned. But again, echo the sentiments of Counsel Freeman, I, I use the document very frequently.
Dave?
Just to confirm that, this is something that I know, once we do the three-year budget and we get, or the strap plan and the three-year budget, this is a document that I would use monthly with citizens who came in or even online referring people to download it. Because it's very readable, very easy to understand, and then go directly to the department that they're, or division that they're focused on. So very useful document, lots of longevity.
I may be the only one that says that. I, I didn't really use it that much. It wasn't extremely useful for me. It was helpful to give some overviews, but I ended up not touching it very much at all. And I was mostly sticking with the, the capital book and the operating book. One thing that would have been nice to see is, you know, some of theirs, some of the departments had listed projects that didn't go ahead. And I was curious as to why. So there were, sometimes there was information presented with no real context. And that made it a little bit difficult to be making decisions about these things. So that was one thing that might have made it a little bit more useful for myself.
Yeah, I put somewhat, because I, I really liked having some of the key priorities. Not having been a part of the past strategic planning, I really liked seeing what the key priorities were moving forward and some background on them. And I can't remember right now specifically what I found confusing, but just in some of the forecasts and budget overviews, there were some times when there were things that seemed to overlap or didn't overlap, or I would see some number that didn't quite make sense. And I, I'm sorry, I don't have specific examples. I can try and figure them out afterwards. So I would, I would tend to like, when it came to the numbers here, I would tend to abandon this and then go directly kind of to the source in the capital or budget book. So if I, if I, I will try and find a specific example for you. And it could just be a matter of that this is like really a high-level overview. But because I don't have the background information myself yet as a new counselor, I think some of those pieces didn't make sense. So I'm not sure if it's the document itself or if it's just sort of where I'm at in the process, but that's my experience. So you know.
Others? So I think for me, I was, I was in Counselor Bonagor's camp. This was the last document I read that, that staff produced after I went through the operating and capital books and the sub-reference items in detail. And then came back to the, to the business plans and, and staff got a note from me at the time about where the crosstalk wasn't happening. In particular, you know, those items that were in the, if we had more resources, we were due under 2019. Some of them, we had, staff had actually funded. Some of the, most of them were menu list items. Some of them were not even menu list items. And when I asked staff about those, those were, well, we're, we're thinking about this project. It may come forward in future years. We're not really looking for council to pull the trigger on funding with these. So I think that comes with how I viewed the document since it came out, which is it is a conversation tool to help tell a, tell a story. But it doesn't link very well to, to the budget process and how we do, at least not from my perspective for how it's used. The, the sync isn't directly there between budget items. A good chunk of our budget is do the same thing. And that's a good chunk of our funding that, that comes forward on those items. And, and so it, it doesn't really drive a lot of the conversation. It drives the, the extras that we're trying to add or squeeze in and, and some of those pieces. And I've, I've gotten sense that, and staff confirmed it here from a process piece, maybe connecting to, to work plan conversations. But those aren't connected to strategic planning conversations. It doesn't, it doesn't flow as an implementation of the strategic plan. It's an identification of a few, a few initiatives to highlight that are, that are coming forward. There will be a counselor who will disagree with that assessment. I, I know we can talk about that, but for me, it doesn't work. And I hope it works when we have a new strategic planning process. Because, because I see it as, as it's been laid out, as a need to identify closer to, to work plan, what the initiatives are that are driving out of the strategic piece. And that will link a lot better to the operating budget and the capital budget than the selection of, we need three projects, then we need two more projects and those fit in the buckets. Rather than things that feel to me like they're being driven from the work plan of staff. So I haven't used it as a tool to, to engage, because I, I know it's not as connected as it needs to be for me to, to understand how the budget's progressing. I'll go back to Counsel Freeman.
Well, fundamentally, it should do that. That's, that's the problem. Like there, there is a problem with the corporate business plans and there has been for two, the past two that we've had in that they aren't well-aligned with the strategic plan and they absolutely should be. Because if, if, if we're, if we're identifying things within corporate business plans that aren't strategically aligned with our strategic plan, we shouldn't be doing those things. And Jeff's 100% right. Like the, the things that, the things, the everyday things that we need to do to make sure that the water's clean and make sure that the water gets treated, that should be in those corporate business plans because that is a primary service that we provide. These corporate business plans shouldn't be some foo-foo stuff that we've just dreamed up for the next three years that are above and beyond what's really important to doing as a city. And, and, you know, I just, I felt that this corporate business plan was so much better than the last one that we did from the perspective that at least it started to head in that direction. But going forward, if it's not aligning with the strategic plan. But going forward, if it's not aligning with the strategic plan, then it's a useless document. And so, that's how I want to see it, and I think Jeff's 100% right, in terms of what should be there, and that's, you know, it, we, I really felt like we started to get there this year, but we got a lot further to go on those corporate business plans.
I appreciate that, and I apologize for my earlier reaction, this has just been in the backburner of my mind on, on some of those. Let me say something positive, uh, uh, on, on the direction that staff had highlighted, and that's the looking back at the last budget that we'd done. I think the backward mapping to forward mapping, once we get a good forward map, is, is helpful. And, and I think the, the pages on a look back at 216 to 218 really do, uh, you know, highlight that. Here are some key successes that we, we drove, we could probably drive those even more from a strategic, you know, bucket perspective, and here's how we engaged the public. I, I think from a communications tool, those were really helpful. Um, and, and, uh, it's easier to do that going backwards than going forward. So, I recognize from talking with staff, there's some timing issues with the development of, of all of these, uh, of all of these documents, that to get the, the high gloss stuff going through, uh, through communications and, and lay out some of the information came in before everything was settled at a CMT level on the budget, and that was part of where the sync issues were coming from. So, we need to, on the staff side, think about the process, uh, to, to make sure we can produce a document that will, will be useful for, uh, for all of us. Other comments or feedback? Are we on question seven now?
Thank you. So, now we're moving on to council meetings. In terms of, you know, uh, the topics that were discussed, the pace, um, so just as a quick reminder then, on December 10th, we released the budget and the business plans, we, we launched the actual budget survey. Uh, then, on that day, we also had things like the Reserve and Reserve Fund report, the City Utilities Report, so there was a lot of information, if council remembers, um, on that day being released, but very little required a decision on that day. Most of it was coming back in future iterations, so, uh, we provided it. Then, January 14th, the 21st, and the 28th, the business plan presentations were conducted by, um, the various departments, as you see above. City Utilities came back on January 21st, so there was that, um, month lag or so. And then, February 4th was the capital review day, where you looked at routine versus non-routine classifications, and then February 11th was the budget approval day, February 15th, the budget survey was closed. So, just a quick reminder of that process. Um, and then, we would like to ask, uh, for feedback, so not a poll question, on what you thought about that, um, in terms of the timing, the pace, um, you know, the meetings themselves, were they useful? Is there ways we could improve those? Um, open to really any feedback there.
So, in open-ended conversation mode, so, I guess if you want to say the words one, two, or three as you're going, you can, and if it make you feel comfortable. Thoughts, council? Meeting dates, feedback, Counselor Vasek?
Yeah, I mean, it was way too fast-paced, I had no idea what I was getting into in October. Like, but that wasn't your fault. Um, I think, also along the lines of what Counselor Bonagora said before, to Keshwar is, like, thank you for having that meeting with all of us. That was extremely helpful, but then also all of your staff who, I mean, you answered such detailed questions and so kindly, I mean, like, if you were annoyed at all, you never even showed it a little bit, who just kept saying, thank you for asking questions, no question is stupid, oh, thank you for that question, of course I'll meet with you, like, oh my gosh, and you have to do that every four years, potentially with new people, so, I really admire your patience and grace. Um, and so, I think the whole process was very helpful, and, and, uh, I didn't keep up with those dates, even though you did that for us, and even though Counselor Henry sent us a whole, um, outline in more detail, I didn't keep up with it because I was overwhelmed myself, but I found it extremely helpful, and I would find it extremely helpful, uh, again, uh, next year, because I'll know what I'm getting into, and I'll be able to, to have a sense of what that will bring, so thank you again.
Counselor Henry?
Thank you through you, uh, Chair Henry. Uh, Filipe, I too found the pace perfect. It was nice to have the overview at the beginning of, and I, like Counselor Vasek, I have no idea what I was getting into on December 10th. Uh, and then, it was comforting to know that we were going to go through each commissioner area and have dedicated time to talk about that, so thank you also to the commissioners for really preparing yourself for the days that you were, you were with us. So, I wouldn't change anything about that, that path at all, I think, I think that is enough time, and it also, in my mind, gave enough opportunity, and maybe we need, can publicize it a little bit more for members of the public to come if there were particular areas that they were wanting to focus on, rather than trying to sit through the, the whole thing all at the end. So, I think that it was a good pace, so thank you.
Uh, through you, Chair Henry. I found the, the pace and the breakdown to be really effective. It, I can't praise you highly enough for how you structured everything. Getting the books before the Christmas break was also fantastic, because I had lots of time to sit down and get myself ready for what was to come in the new year. Um, I also really appreciated the fact that the commissioners and, and staff remained open to questions, um, leading up to and after their presentations, so thank you to everyone, that was, it really helped put me in a strong position to be making decisions on, on budget day. And when you asked earlier about the breakdown between having one day devoted to, like, establishing what is routine and non-routine, and then one day to the budget proper, sorry, uh, I found that really helpful as well, because, um, it was an opportunity to, you know, pluck out a couple of things that I felt, um, might need further public input, and then we could set them as, as non-routine, and I was feeling very comfortable with that process. And I think it, it made a lot of sense to me, and I'm hoping it made a lot of sense to the public as well.
I, I really got a lot out of the, um, presentations from each of the commissioners. So, um, on that day, like, even, like, not doing two commissioners in a day would be really good, because I'd really like to seize that time to ask more questions around the different operating and capital budgets, because I felt that it was topical, and it was in alignment with the presentations that they gave. Because I think, I don't know whether it was Mr. Rapp that, and we ended up keeping him really late at night, or he had to come back another day, I can't remember which, how that played out, but I just felt like those days were really good, and just doing one would be worthwhile. Um, the, I liked getting the documents before Christmas, too. I, I know that that's a push to get it done, especially after an election, but it was really helpful. The actual, the day that you released the budget documents, because we've just got them in their, our hands, I don't actually find all of the multitude of presentations that happened on that day to be very helpful, because I haven't even had a chance to crack the cover. So, like, well, I appreciate it's kind of like, here's the budget, and here's an overview, it, it would be easier for me to just, if, like, the, the one pa, like, the document that I kind of didn't find very useful to have in hard copy, to me, that overview's all we need on that day, that we get those documents, and then nothing else, so that we can just take it all in. There is just too much that day. And, um, and then I also find, just, one of the things on the website, I think that, I think that the presentations, the PowerPoint presentations kind of being mixed in with the documentation is very confusing, because people end up downloading all this stuff only to try to figure out which is the right document. Uh, uh, part of me says, can we just put the presentations in a different section? And if people, you know, and you can date them, like, you know, release, the release presentation, or Commissioner Rapp's presentation, whatever that looks like, but then just have the straight kind of numbers documents on their own. Um, but, um, that, that's, in terms of spreading it out, I wouldn't change that, it would make it too hard at the end.
Uh, through you, Chair Henry. Overall, I thought the pace and timing was, was really good. Could, could we have had, uh, extra meetings with, uh, less commissioners? Yeah, I think, I think that'd be helpful, but I recognize the time constraints around that. Um, something I just wanted to highlight that was really helpful for me, and maybe I'm the only one, but, uh, is, uh, the discussion we had around reserves beforehand, uh, where that was sort of introduced to us in an exceptionally long, uh, council packet, like, the very first council packet I read, that was hundreds of pages of reserve, uh, jargon, uh, but it was actually really helpful for me, going through that in advance, uh, to, uh, then later on, see how that sort of tied back, uh, from the budget process, particularly where you're looking at capital budget stuff, and where those, where those reserves were coming from. So, I think, uh, having a reserve update, uh, in advance, uh, I think, uh, from my perspective, was, was useful.
Others? Seeing none, I'll hold my feedback for the next question.
So, uh, a bit of a segue to Counselor Henry's point, maybe, about promotion and advertising. Um, so, all of our budget documents were posted to the city's web, uh, site, to the budget page. On December 10th, we released them, um, moments before the actual, uh, but, council meeting itself. And then, we posted three ads in the, in the Chronicle, um, some of which were about the budget itself, some of which were about the business plan, some of which were about the budget survey, and a combination of, of those things, um, depending on the timing. So, that was, um, kind of the traditional view, and then, um, we also did some social media promotion, which Tony will get into here.
So, we did augment the, the printed ads with, uh, social media, both from elected officials, uh, who helped us in that regard, as well as senior staff, and then from our corporate account. Um, so, again, to promote both the, the opportunity to participate in the, in the survey and, and the budget. We received, uh, approximately 3,500-page views on our budget page on the website, uh, of that, of which staff were excluded, were able to take those visits out. Uh, of the 3,500, there were 1,155 unique visits, so if Counselor Bonagora, for example, visited 2,000 times, we were able to allow for that and bring the number down, so. Uh, and, and the two most popular, uh, links that were, were visited were, were the base budget request, and then the budget in brief.
So, that brings us to the second last question. So, was there an effective variety of promotional channels used to reach the public in a timely way? And if all responses are in, um, then we'll go to an opportunity to provide verbal feedback around those comments.
Verbal feedback would be helpful, given where those bars are, are sitting. Um, I know this one's always a very difficult nut to crack on some of those. Council? Counselor Bonagora?
Uh, through you, Chair Henry. I'm, I'm willing to start the conversation, at least. Um, this is a hard one, and anyone who has anything to do with trying to share a message today can recognize the difficulty in trying to share, share this message and to get people involved. Um, I, I suspect we might be hampering ourselves by assuming people aren't interested. Uh, what I found when I was talking to people is, people are interested, they just don't have time to dive into the budget books themselves, that's why they elect people like us. But they're, they're interested in how the budget works, they're interested in what's being requested, they're interested, yes, in the impact that it will have on their household budget, but possibly more importantly, how this ties into the priorities we have as a city. Um, so I'm wondering, like, I'm, we don't have the answers, no one has the answers to this right now, but some of the, some of the things people were bringing to me was, you know, how does this tie into active transportation? How does this tie into environmental stewardship? And I'm wondering if we could shape some discussions about the budget around those kind of, kind of pillars? So, go to people and use their interests as a gateway to get them into budget discussions, and to introduce them to the almost frightening amount of data that, and information that's available to them. Like, I don't expect anyone who is not staff or sitting around this horseshoe to go diving deep into, and reading the entire budget, the books, and all of the packages, and everything online. But I want people to know that they can, if they want to, and if they have one particular item that they are really passionate about, all of the information is there, and here is how you can get back in touch with us to talk about it. Um, so for me, I think that would have been really powerful, and if you can manage to do that, um, you'll have everyone coming to your door to, to find the secret. Like, it's not going to be easy, but I, I, I don't think that means we shouldn't try.
Counselor Freeman?
Through you, Chair Henry. Um, I struggle with this one. I mean, I said yes to this mainly because I just, I've tried to set my mind to how many different ways that we get enter into these conversations in the past years, and I just can't think, we try stuff, we try new stuff every year. Like, we, you know, we go to the, the mayor's New Year's levy, we try to set things up there, we've even, um, I remember our first term on council, I'm looking at, um, Mr. Anderson, like, we brought in some thought leaders within the community, and we probably had, like, 50 people at Rim Park, right? To, in that particular case, we were asking them to delve into the strategic plan, but, um, but even that, like, trying, trying to really get people interested is, it's really tough. And, and this year, I tried a new tactic, which was the, the loudest voices that have been very contrary-minded to tax increases within my ward, I sat down with them, I sent them personal emails and said, you know, would you like, you know, do you have time? Will you sit down with me on a Saturday morning, I'll bring all the budget documents, and we'll go through it? And it was, it was so fascinating to me, I spent three hours with an individual that then wrote an email to me and staff, which I think was probably not the kindest email that they've written. And, you know, um, Filipe responded with courtesy and answered all the questions, but it still wasn't good enough. And it, like, so it's really tough, like, I, I just, for me, I just, I'm, I just can't, I can't figure out any other tools, and, and we take a lot of this stuff to our committees, right? Like, you know, the, um, committees that are specific to budgets, like cash grants and all that kind of stuff, you see this. So, I don't know, like, it's, it's just, I really, I really know that people want us to come to them. Um, but, but when you come and they don't come back, like, like, they don't join, like, I just, so I just don't know which way to do it, I've, I, and that doesn't mean I want to give up, like, don't get me wrong, but, but it's just, it's so tricky, and I really appreciate the question that was asked on the survey, how did you find out about the budget documents? And one of the, one of them was from your ward counselor, and that was the least comment of the answer that people said they got the information from. Now, mind you, I was also surprised by the leaf collection answer, that's just another point. But, um, but I thought that was fascinating, so it kind of said that people are going to the website. I actually don't think advertisements in the newspaper go all that far, because I don't think people are, are reading, um, as much print material as they did once. And I always get kicked in the teeth when I say, oh, well, it was posted in the Chronicle, because mo, like, in, in my ward, it's very spotty who gets the Chronicle delivered to their house, so it's, it's a trick, it's really tricky, I just, I don't know the answer at all.
I know, I used, uh, look for the notices in the Chronicle to figure out what I don't already know about what's coming up on our agenda, but, uh, that makes me, uh, more unique. I have Counselor Vasek than Counselor Bonagora.
Okay. I don't have the answers either, but this is my work, so, uh, I get very excited about this, and I would be totally happy to talk about it more. But like, okay, so yeah, we all wanted more participation, 55 is such a sad number, and that's not a reflection on you, I'm not, uh, saying that, but like, these are so great! And so, you could go into a randomly selected, like, five classrooms on one Tuesday at UW, and get a group of 250 students, do a brief presentation, have some questions, and then you use these in the class. So, that would be a way to get a ton more, and then have students represented, you could do it at retirement homes, you could do it in, um, lower-income neighborhoods, you could do it with specific, um, groups you want to hear from more, and so, I think this is an amazing tool, I don't know if we have more of these, as one, uh, point. And then, I, I also highly agree with the idea of doing, um, sessions, like, looking at things through a particular lens, and so, I, I have learned that Counselor Wong Tam in Toronto does a gendered, a gendered base analysis of the budget, just with, I guess, her constituents, but I think it would be great to have either staff, or if you can be the liaison with community groups- be great to have either staff or if you can be the liaison with community groups to see if they might do, do a workshop. Or you could do a workshop and then they could facilitate that gender-based analysis with the group who's there, or race-based analysis, LGBTQ2+, environment, all those pieces. So I think there's real opportunity there to look at the, at it through different means. And then in talking about inclusion and the strategic planning session the other day, I think that it will also likely align with parts of where the strategic plan is going. And so I'd really love to see that this year. If I could be a help in any way, I'd love to, but then that only, that limits it to people who know me and who are potentially in my ward and who might be aligned with what I think. And so I'd want it to make it broader than that, although I like what I think too. So, so please let me know if I can be of any help in any way. I'm really excited about this process. You could do it with kids, too. So even at, at schools, right? Go into their classrooms, I mean, they, I went into the French school just to talk about the mayor for the day contest, and they would be, they were so engaged, they were asking questions, some of them were very angry about sidewalks, no removal, which I was surprised about. But it would just be, they'd really love this, you know, and some kids can probably do it on their cell phones at university. So I've taken too much time talking about this, but I'm very excited about it, I'd have lots of other ideas. Please let me know how I can help.
Through you, Chair Henry. I marvel at my colleague, Councillor Vasek's enthusiasm, and I love it, and I'm entirely on board as well, too. But I also recognize, so I'm all in favor of doing anything unique and cool and interesting and different things that we haven't tried, especially you should, like, lean on all of the, sorry, all the new councillors, you should lean on all of us because we still have that enthusiasm and we, we want to be able to, no, no, I'm not, like, you guys, you guys have tried a bunch of stuff already and you've said that you feel like it's not, like, it's not effective. So let's, let's, let's take that off of the existing councillor's plates, is all. But I will say that communication, I think, I mean, it's, I'm going to echo also what Councillor Freeman said, it's exceptionally difficult. You can reach out to 500 people and it'll be the 501st person, that's the angriest person that you didn't get to them, invariably, all the time. So I recognize how difficult that is. And I just, I want to put out there that I think, again, to Councillor Freeman's point, that a lot of the communication around this type of stuff has to come from the councillors, I really do. And I will apologize for this past budget process that I didn't do quite as much as Councillor Bonagor did, and she did a great job on, on her social media feed. Frankly, if I'm being very honest, I was a little worried about people coming to me and asking me questions when I didn't know the answer to them at, at the outset. And I, I'm going to pledge to do a little bit better job myself next time around. And I've tried as more of a postscript to update my constituents on, you know, how the budget process works on my website around the operating budget and the capital budget and focusing on things that are happening in my ward to keep people informed. And I think that really has to fall on the councillors as well to, to make sure that we're getting out there, that, getting that message out there.
Thank you, through the chair. As an old and unenthusiastic councillor, I, the reason I answered somewhat is I think there's just, as Councillor Bonagor mentioned, there's, there's always more work to do, always more opportunity. And I think we shouldn't think that everybody who wants to be involved in the budget needs to be engaged and then, like, open up operating sheets and stuff like that. They may not want that level of detail, some may just want the basic level of detail, some may want business plans. So I, I think what we'll find as we do the strategic plan, that's where we really want a lot of engagement, because the strategic plan will so much inform our three-year budget. And I, I just, you know, I think always looking for new ideas, enabling councillors that want to be, want to do different levels of engagement, that's good. But just always looking for new ideas. I don't think there's anything particularly wrong with what we did, it's just hard time, Christmas time, people, you know, I hired you to do that job, look at the budget. So anyway, I think that just continue to look for new opportunities. My vote shouldn't be that we didn't do enough, just that there's always more to do.
Thank you, Chair Henry, through you. I would echo the same thing that Mayor just said, my, what my leading comment was going to be, the time of the year is something that's going to be an effect for us. And I think equally, four of us being brand new, I would agree that we didn't know how or what we could be communicating, which made me, made me think about, what is the message we're trying to get out? If we're launching the books and it's to say the books are up on the website, that's one thing. If it's, we want your input on something, that's a different kind of message and whether there's a different way to get that out. You may have tried this before, but I wonder if building the input on the budget happens before the documents come out. So there's, and I recognize in an election year, it's a little bit harder to do, but thinking going forward with the three-year plan coming up, is there a way to get a little bit of input before so you're not mixing the two things up? Otherwise, I, I did say somewhat as well, but it really is more, not that we were doing things badly, we can always do more and, and just be clear with the messages.
I voted somewhat as well, because I, I mean, with the way it was communicated out there, I think if, if people are interested in it, I think they'll find it, right? Or they'll ask. And like, I often find, I'm not a big Facebook contributor, but I often find out, like, I would find out from a neighborhood association Facebook page that the budget was out. So, I mean, there it is, right? I didn't even have to, so there, and then in my ward, a lot of folks, they read the Chronicle, that's where they find out what's going on. So, yeah, there's always lots of unique and fun ways you can get the word out there, but really, and I, and I think too, I think just because we didn't get a lot of feedback, that doesn't mean that people aren't interested. I think, like, like Mayor Jaworski said, we're elected to make those decisions and, and I think people think, are confident that we can do that job and that staff are competent and we know our priorities and, and our constituents' priorities. So I think it was a great job.
I think this is a good conversation for us to have, and the team has been taking copious notes, and one can always figure out what can reasonably fit into a work plan within, within the resources we can allocate to, to do it. I, I appreciate in law, Councillor Freeman going after the folks that were going to go after her. It's, a good defense is sometimes a good offense, right? So, which is, which is interesting. I heard Councillor, you know, Bonagor's comments, and what I heard in some of those was folks asking for the things they care about and what we're doing about them is more of an affirmation that if we tell them, here's what we're doing, and they, oh, good, that sounds good, you're in alignment, keep going. And if we said we don't actually do anything on that, there'd be feedback. And so it's, but if we're doing the right thing, there's less, but people are looking to know what we're doing from their lens of, I care about X, the city's this big, but I want to know that you, you're taking care of the thing that I, I think about most. One of the things that I saw our neighbour, Southie Union Street, do very effectively, I thought, was that, they, here's four key things we're doing to respond to things we heard through Compass Kitchener, which is their strategic planning exercise that they do at the end of a council term for the next one, which is a little bit interesting in terms of which council approves it and then which council deals with it. We don't have that luxury because this council will deal with its own strategic plan. But, but in some ways, they said, so we heard that these were your priorities, let us highlight a key project under active transportation, a key project here. And so part of the communication out on their December 10th was, here's the four things you need to know about the budget that shows we heard you from the input that you gave us. So that's maybe a communication exercise that can bubble up through refreshed business plans, where there may be now be 15 things that it's useful for a division to say that they're doing for alignments and targets and the rest. But the highlighting of those is, here's the one that's most important for the public, or here's a summary package that is a good, you know, one tweet with a graphic length in each sort of strategic planning bucket, and not every division gets one that we're highlighting. Kitchener did three or five, right? And so I think there's ways to, for us to answer the, I want to know that you're doing stuff I care about, yes, you are, thank you, in a much more effective way. Trying to start a two-way engagement once budget documents have been tabled that would drastically alter what we do around here is much more difficult. And the most input I've seen us do was three years ago, when we actually did have two radically different paths that council was considering, and it went where I thought it would, which is somewhere down the middle. But, but that gave the community something to think about. Do we want a budget that is relatively small, compact and implements a little bit of our strategic plan and comes in at or below the rate of inflation? Or do we want to achieve a lot more of our strategic plan and go beyond that? We actually got a fair amount of feedback three years ago, when we went out into community, lots of, you know, dot democracy things all over the place and questions and answers and things online, and we got some pretty good numbers. But we had a really divergent thing to put in front of them. And what the council of the day said is, we don't want to do that again, we want the budget to be our budget where we have some options. And so we've taken out the biggest tool in our, in our toolkit to, to get people interested and engaged, and that's a drastic and dramatic difference of direction. So that, that'll make it more, more complicated. I, I think what we can work towards, in my view from, from hearing this, is how do we spend some time between when we approve a strategic plan, which is really the best tool for affecting the budget, and it's upstream of the budget? To budget day and budget release and how we walk people through, through that process a little bit, a little bit better, small snippets at a time, so that they can feel that we're translating it, so when the budget comes out, they have a sense of how A became B without losing us for six months in between, which is where we typically go. I don't know what that looks like, but I think maybe there's some places to bake in some of the suggestions that people are thinking about, because it's the linkage between strategic plans and budgets that I think is better. Because you won't do in budget something that you didn't, you should, you didn't plan for in the strategic plan. And to Councillor Freeman's point earlier, if you are, that's a problem. So, so walking people from the A they had a lot of input on and cared about to B where nobody shows up in these processes may at least make us comfortable that we heard people at the right time in the right way and, and, and we've got some engagement along the path. So I think we've got question nine, which is, anything else? So is there anything you wanted to say today in budget feedback you haven't gotten a chance to say already? Councillor Bodley?
Through you, Chair Henry. So just one, one other thing that was, and I didn't, I didn't address this earlier because I'm not really sure where it, where it applies, is trying to understand how, how close we were to previous budgets and where surpluses and deficits maybe occurred within departments and whether there's a trend line there. I know we saw that through a few budget lines, like when we looked at Fleet, that Fleet was, was below or was experiencing deficits or shortfalls, but sort of seeing that through other departments and trying to get an understanding of whether or not the budget that was approved last time around was meaningful and, and how it's been over time. That was something that I thought was maybe, maybe missing for me anyways. What are, what are we actually approving here? We're approving a number that could be achieved and how well are we getting there, I guess?
Other, other feedback? Councillor Freeman?
I just want to say, staff, thank you. Like, I know you got lots of questions, not just from, from new councillors, but also from existing ones. And, and I want to say too, like, I don't, I'll only speak for myself, I can't speak for other people, but when I send you a question at 10 o'clock at night, it means I'm working at that time, but it doesn't mean I expect you to be. And so I know that a lot of times, like, and same, like during the holidays, I know, Keshwar, you responded right away, honest to God, I didn't expect you to. It's okay to have a holiday and get back to me when the new year starts. It's just if I don't get it out of my head when I think about it, I forget about it. Not on purpose, but just because that's how my head works sometimes. So I just, you know, I just kind of want to apologize for emails coming at times when people were supposed to be on vacation, but it just, when, when you work part-time, that's kind of when you get to the work, so.
I understand from the, from the past that our CFO really only takes vacations near the end of year, two out of every four years in a council term, and that's why three-year budgets are really helpful. But I, I want to echo some of Councillor Freeman's comments and refer that to Mr. Anderson to figure out how you can advise council and your own staff, how we can help with ensuring that is, that there is reasonable balance and time and space for, for staff so that they have time that is work time and they have times that aren't work time, recognizing that many of your senior staff are always going to be on call for when the arena roof collapses or, or those other kinds of matters, which it shouldn't. We're working on that, but we're not there yet. When we have to close the library because the roof is leaking, these things do happen. But, but Mr. Anderson, if, if you can work with your staff and then up with council on, on how we can communicate Councillor Freeman's message and how we can all behave on both sides to ensure that staff have enough bandwidth to, to recharge and come to work the next day ready. Because I was mindful of what Councillor Freeman commented on, I saved up a bunch of my stuff and, and released it in, in one blast of emails. I'd written a smattering of emails but didn't send them until there was a window I thought was appropriate, because I thought that would help staff manage themselves better in, in terms of their own time. And I don't think that helps either of us if that's where we feel we have to go to do that. So, so hopefully that's something we can work on. But with, with that, I think we are through with that, that agenda. I think we actually have a recommendation here that was supposed to receive the summary and that we've provided that feedback, so maybe someone could move the recommendations to do the stuff we did, Councillor Freeman, Councillor Bodley, all those in favor carried? No motion given at a previous meeting? I've seen no notice of motion at this meeting, no communications and correspondence from us or the region, there's no unfinished business? Is there any new business council? Seeing none, no, is there any questions? There are no questions. Is there a mover to adjourn? That would be Councillor Vasek, Councillor Bodley, all those in favor? We stand adjourned. Thank you for your participation. This was good.